Is Juliette not here?
Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is 6:35. We're calling the town council meeting, Committee of the Whole, April 22nd, 2025, to order. Council Parker is not here. She's at TBCCA and hopefully will be here a little bit later. All right, on to calendar and communications. Council Mayor, what do you have anything today?
Just one thing. I spoke to the town manager about a situation down in Fort Hill Homes, and he referred me to the proper officials, and I spoke to that gentleman, and he's going to make an inspection on it.
Very good. Thank you. Council Boarder.
Thank you. First, I just want to say I was really honored. I got to perform my first wedding ceremony as a JP, so it was pretty enlightening and definitely a lot of fun, actually. So thank you to the couple that called me up and invited me to be part of their ceremony. So it was a lot of fun. Let's see. I've got some communications regarding Historic District Commission in regards to the chair resigning there. Also, personnel appointments. I guess some more information that I guess, again, Mr. Goodrich was not being considered to move forward. But now there's more seats open. I don't know if they're up to two now or three. I'm not even sure on Historic District Commission. And that's all I have for... Oh, and the other thing was some of the emails that were read at the last town council meeting weren't read in their entirety, especially the one where the first line was only read by Councilor Rusk. It didn't continue the whole email. I did get a copy of the actual email that was read. I did receive the letter from a few other neighbors that got the blank letter that was not signed. So some of the people had reached out to me after watching the video and said they had it too, so got to read that. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass today.
Thank you. Council Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also got a number of emails concerned about a lot of different things, including Board of Ed and Historic District and another couple of other things. We also received a second letter in our mailbox. Again, that was unsigned. So I'm again going to say to my neighbors who received this, please understand that it's not the whole truth. I also, there was some concern about my numbers with the education budget, about when I said it was almost 65% of the budget. To clarify, what I used was the Board of Education budget, which was 94 million plus, debt services, which was at 7.9 million, and CIPs, which was 678,000. If you add these all together and divide it by what the town manager budget was, it's 62.7%, so 63%. If you do that math with the town council budget, where we ended up, it is 62.6%, again, 63%, so almost 65%. So I will stand corrected in that it wasn't 65%, it was 63%. So I just wanted to make sure people understood where I got my numbers from. Thank you.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received all the same emails that everybody else did. I also attended, on April 11th, the Wolfbrooks... They called it the Wolfbrook Studies, which was a walk by about 20 community stakeholders in the Wolfbrook property, looking at what the future will be there. We walked with a forest management person, and so it's a development of the forest management plan. We looked at trails and wildlife and trees and plants. So it was very, very interesting. And then last week, I was invited and attended the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association 2025 Conference. That was very, very interesting, and a thank you to Chief Vasaro and Deputy Chief Gailey on a very interesting day, learning about how police go about doing police stuff. So it was really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride.
Thank you. Normal email communications that everybody else received regarding the budget, the Board of Ed budget, the Groton Heights property, and some railroad project work. Other than that, that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gajaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I will have to report is at the conclusion of tonight's meeting and before the next meeting, I will be stepping down as a town councillor due to my fact that I was elected to the Connecticut State House, and we are coming up in our budget season and the end of the legislative session. So it's going to be incredibly difficult for me to do both roles to my fullest capability. So it will be... It's an honor. It has been an honor of a lifetime to serve in the town that I love and work with such an amazing town staff, an amazing town manager. And I'm also thankful to the friendship and support of all my colleagues during these 20 or so months that I have served on the Groton Town Council. I will miss you all terribly. And through the highs and the lows, it was a wonderful experience, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. So it was a pleasure to serve with everybody and serve the people of Groton, and I look forward to continuing serving the residents of the 40th District in the Connecticut State House. So I wish you all the best of luck in the completion of this term and the future endeavors, and I look forward to working with you all in my new role. So with that, I yield back.
Thank you. Well, thank you. It has been a delight working with you as well. And I don't think you're going too far, and I'm sure you're going to be a phone call away for all of us if we need to get in touch with you on any numerous topics that are going on at this state. I also had many correspondences with residents, and particularly one that is near my home, S.B. Butler. I'm hearing some things that are being discussed out in the community, and if you would like, you can... You are free to reach out to me and discuss them with me, because I'm hearing a lot of misinformation out there. And with that, this past week, actually, just Monday, somebody on the international stage had passed away, Pope Francis, and I was thinking that maybe we should just do a moment of silence for Pope Francis, and thinking of him, and I'll be saying a little prayer for him. Thank you. So moving on to approval of minutes. Council Boarder.
Yes, I also just forgot something. I just wanted to say Happy Earth Day. It is Earth Day. I forgot that on my notes. I didn't flip my page, so...
Thank you.
It is definitely an important thing to recognize with all the different climate changes and things that we consider, you know, taking the time to, you know, acknowledge that Earth Day does exist. So thank you.
Up next, we have approval of minutes. Council Gajaski, would you like to take that?
Yes. Item 2025-389, March 27th, 2025, special meeting minutes, and April 8th, 2025 minutes. Motion to approve the Committee of the Whole's special meeting minutes of March 27th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of April 8th, 2025. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Gajaski, seconded by Jones. Council Boarder.
Thank you. I won't be supporting these. I just feel, I don't know, the way they're written, I could go page by page, but I just, I don't know. I know there's never... I just won't support them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-389, March 27th, 2025, special meeting minutes, and April 8th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That passes seven to one to zero with Boarder opposed. All right, on to new business. 2025-415, scoreboard funding donation acceptance. Let me find the right page. All right, that's on page 15. Council McBride, you want to take that one?
Sure. Item 2025... Excuse me, 414, 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. Like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program on June 3rd, 2025.
Are you on the scoreboard funding on page 15?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was on 17.
Okay. We gotta go back to 15.
Thanks.
I'll back up here.
Thank you.
Item 2025-415, scoreboard funding donation acceptance. Like to make a motion to recommend a resolution accepting the donations from Electric Boat in the amount of $45,000, and the Fitch High School Booster Club for $5,000 to be used to purchase two electronic scoreboards for the Groton Middle School, and to forward the request to accept the $45,000 donation from Electric Boat to the RTM for approval per Rule 6.5.3.
Second. By McBride, seconded by Rusk.
And Mayor, if there's any questions, we have Athletic Director Romano online on Zoom.
Okay. Council Boarder.
For me, this is pretty much a no-brainer. Thank you to Electric Boat for their generous contribution. It's, you know, very needed. You know, I did hear some concerns that folks are worried that we have to use booster money. I'm thankful for the Booster Club using it, but, you know, I do wish that there was better funding to increase our athletic fields in-house and a better plan when things like this should arise. But again, I mean, to me, there's not much to vote down here. This is, you know, an opportunity, so it's wonderful. But I just hope in the future, as again, as we look at our athletic fields, scoreboards, everything, we are in dire need of help and support on scoreboards throughout the community and the high school and on the middle school level. So I'm excited for this, but I do think that these need to be budgeted items, and our town should look at this as an investment. And I hope in the future that we seek outside resources like we are, but also find ways to support and fund. Thank you.
Council Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to say thank you to Electric Boat. I know the mayor and Council Parker and I met with a member of the team over there at Electric Boat about how they can get involved. So this is a great way for Electric Boat to get involved in our community, and I very much appreciate that. Town manager through the mayor, how was the $5,000 from Booster Club decided to be used? Is that something?
The Board of... This is the recommendation from the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Council McBride.
Thank you. Just a question. There were several resident questions regarding this, and I want to get back to them. My only question is, what's the timing of this in terms of, I mean, softball's underway right now. Is there any timing or estimate of when this could be actually functioning?
Well, I can only answer to the funding to be approved by RTM on, I believe it's the 14th of May, but the AD may have answered.
Mr. Romano, do you have an answer?
Yes, it would roughly be a six to eight week turnaround.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sorry. It would be roughly a six to eight week turnaround once we put in to purchase the boards.
Thank you.
You're all set?
Yes, thanks.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my question is, this is for two scoreboards. Is that correct? Because the images show, looks like a football one on one and a softball one on the other one. Is that correct?
Mr. Romano.
Yes, one is for the softball field, and the other one is for the turf field. So there is two, yes.
For the football field. Okay. And are they basically just splitting... They're $25,000 apiece. Is that basically?
Electric Boat is covering the $45,000 worth, which covers the installation of it, delivery, you know, all that. And the Booster Club's covering roughly the additional $5,000.
So it's a $50,000 donation. It's really $25,000 apiece, is each sign?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right, no, that's all I had. Thank you. And thank you to Electric Boat for the contribution and to the Booster Clubs for all the work they do in raising money for different school activities. Okay, done.
Council Boarder.
I just want to clarify. It's for the softball field and the turf field at the middle school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Not the football field?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that was clear. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands. I think we all like to have money coming in from outside sources and the generous donation from Electric Boat and the Booster Club, so thank you very much. We'll take a vote on 2025-415, the scoreboard funding donation acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. All righty. Up next is 2025-414, 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. This is on page 17 with a motion on page 18. Council Jones, do you want to take that?
2025-414, 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. Motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program of June 3rd, 2025. So moved.
Second. Moved by Jones, seconded by Boarder. Good evening.
Good evening. How is everybody doing tonight? John Reiner, Director Planning and Development Services, want to talk to you quickly about the Neighborhood Assistance Act. This is a program that we do every year. I think we've been doing this for well over five years. Next slide, please. And again, this is kind of a pass-through program. Requirements are, we have to have a public hearing and acknowledge that these businesses serve a purpose for the town. Want to kind of quickly talk tonight just about the parameters, the applications that we've had, the outreach that we do, and kind of the schedule we set to get to that July 1st deadline. And again, this is something that's available for municipal and tax-exempt organizations within the town. There's some tax credits that they have to link up with businesses. There are statutory limits, including who can do this and the maximum amounts there. We've been doing this for about 10 years in the town. We've had 16 organizations over the course of that time period that have participated. Annually, businesses' contributions range anywhere from $25,000 to almost $250,000. And again, we promote this in a lot of places. This year, we only have two applications, but in addition, we had spoken to some others and tried to encourage some additional applications, but at the end, we only ended up getting the two. And the town council role with this is really just receiving the information, acknowledging the application, and that they provide an important service to the community. Next slide. So again, those two applications that we have, Know-Inc Baptist Church and then the Town of Groton, one for $38,000, the other for $150,000. Next slide. And again, just kind of looking at that schedule, really, you know, the next step here is to make that schedule the public hearing, which would be in June. Happy to answer any questions to the council.
Council Boarder.
Thank you. It's great to see another new organization on here that I don't believe has gotten it in the past. Is that correct? Know-Inc Baptist?
I do not believe that Know-Inc Baptist...
Not that I can find, anyway.
Nope, they have not.
No. So that's great. So, you know, I know before it was sometimes some of the same agencies sometimes, which just happens, but it's great to see other folks getting access and knowing about it and applying. So that was really encouraging. Definitely familiar with Know-Inc Baptist Church, just, you know, going way back since I was a child and their outreach and services. At one point, they ran adolescent girls' facilities in Mystic on High Street, as well as in Know-Inc on Main Street. It used to be Know-Inc Baptist Group Homes. It started through there. Now it's turned into a different agency. But, you know, they have had some many different types of homes and assistance. They have a childcare facility that they provide to the town below, in the bottom part of the building. And they do just a lot of outreach for different folks in need throughout the community. So excited to see them on here. I definitely consider them an agency in need. And then the other one being, I believe, it's ourself, right? So definitely a benefit to apply for this and, you know, use this for our, you know, community center that we've been trying to push along, which would benefit all of the community. It was, you know, it's been very exciting to see New London's, you know, build coming along and seeing the progress and, you know, definitely feeling envious of not having our own facility, you know, across the river here. So have we applied for this ever in the past?
Yes, through our library we have. We've received some money for A-Track upgrades previously.
So my thought is, you know, are we only allowed to apply for this for the community center one time, or next year could we possibly look at this again?
I think in each year, there's a maximum of $150,000.
Okay. Yeah, I would just, just a thought, not telling you what to do, a suggestion more than a order or a, you know, just a suggestion would be, I really think if we can, for the community center, since we're trying to push this along, this, if we could be awarded, this would be a great way to apply every year if we can. I think, you know, and there's definitely a lot of upgrades and projects that are needed there, so... Or other town, you know, facilities, but definitely this one. So, but thank you again. And again, this one to me is, you know, just something that kind of goes through, and we just, like you said, it's more of a pass-through than it is really, you know, a y or a n. But I'm very happy to see Community Center on there and even more so another agency. So thank you.
And also in the past, our Parks and Recreation Department has also received funding through this as well.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no hands, we'll vote on 2025-414, the 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program, setting up public hearing for June 3rd, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-409, FYE 2025 Fourth Quarter Transfers. This is on page 29. Council Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-409, FYE 2025 Fourth Quarter Transfers. Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve FYE 2025 Fourth Quarter Transfers and refer to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Rusk, seconded by Jones. Good evening.
Good evening. Dee Morrison, Director of Finance. Can everyone hear me okay?
I think so.
So the town charter allows for, during the last quarter of the year, transfers of supplemental appropriations or...
You might want to bring the microphone closer.
Transfers between funds of any departments that are requesting additional funding. So based on the requests from the departments, this year we have a bit more of a higher balance. Voter registration is requesting $30,000. Finance, $30,000. Public Safety, $330,000. Human Services, $20,000. And Insurance and Claims, an additional $30,000, for a total of $440,000. The current balance in our contingency fund will not cover that. We only have $245,894 left in contingency, so the remainder would need to be in approved supplemental appropriation to make up the $440,000.
Thank you. Mr. Bird, do you have anything to add?
No, unless there's any questions for me.
Okay. Council Gajaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It says for Public Safety that it's overtime and contractual. Do we have the breakdown of how much was, what percentage of it was overtime and what percentage is contractual?
I don't have that breakdown with me, and there's a few more items to it, too. I don't have that breakdown with me, but just to mention some of the reasons. They started out, the budget was $100,000, was cut knowing that they'd probably end up needing that. That was the understanding. They had two FTEs and dispatch leave, which created, you know, when you bring in new ones, you have to train, but you're also paying overtime at the same time, or potentially. There was spikes in July and August for vacation times, three FTEs on military leave, three on fraternity, maternity leave, sorts of a wide variety of things. So we increased overtime patrols and staffing to deal with complaints in Mystic. We've been doing a lot of time in there. So that took up probably $30,000, $40,000 right there. But those are the biggest ones, and the contract is the lion's share.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I just, because I remember this during the FY '25 budget discussion, and so I remember, you know, taking the money. I remember my reasoning for voting for that was taking some of the money out upfront and then adding it back later if needed. So just wanted to get some more information on that, and thank you. Go back.
All right, seeing no other hands, we will take a vote on 2025-409, FYE 2025 Fourth Quarter Transfers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-393, Setting RTM Annual Meeting Date for FYE 2026 Town Budget. This is on page 35 of our packet. Council Pacina, would you like to take that one?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-393, Setting RTM Annual Meeting Date for FY 2026 Town Budget. Motion to recommend a resolution setting the annual budget meeting for the representative town meeting for Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Thrive 55 Active Living Center Hybrid Virtual Meeting.
Second. Moved by Pacina, seconded by Boarder. All right, having no discussion, we will vote on 2025-393, Setting a RTM Annual Meeting Date for FYE 2026 Town Budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-394, Approving FYE 2026 Budget. This one is on page 36 of our packet.
Point of information?
Your question?
The date that we set, is that the only date the RTM's meeting, or is that the start of their meetings?
That's the start.
Thank you.
All right, this is on page 36. Council... Oh, where am I at? Mayor, would you like to take that one?
Thank you. Item 2025-394, Approving FYE 2026 Budget. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the FYE 2026 Budget.
Moved by Mayor, seconded by Rusk.
So the town manager's proposed fiscal '26 budget was a total of $163,147,007, which was a 3.8% increase, or $6,4,161 over the fiscal '25 adopted adjusted budget.
Can you repeat? I'm sorry. Can you repeat your numbers? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. They are, just for reference, also on page 39. Where we go, I'm basically just kind of reiterating the reconciliation of what it was from his proposed to how it got to yours. So the total budget for the town manager's fiscal '26 proposed was $163,147,007, which was a 3.8% increase over the fiscal '25 adjusted adopted budget, or $6,4,161 increase. This amount was reduced by the town council's changes by $3,536,985 to a total of $159,000... I'm sorry, $159,603,722, which changed the increase over the fiscal '25 adjusted adopted budget to just a 1.6% increase. The main changes from the town manager's budget to the town council was the education decrease and also a couple of changes in the funding sources for the capital reserve projects. Oh, and I should note that was just on the general fund side. On the other funds, which includes the golf course sewer fund, solid waste, Mumford Cove revaluation fund, recreation, Borrowwit CT, the sewer district, capital reserve, fleet fund, technology, and the human services assistance funds. The town manager's budget was $24,939. The town manager's budget was $24,939,672. And that changed slightly with the town council, with their changes to $25,059,672.
Counselor Bordaline.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for reading that. I'll speak for myself. And when I use "we," I use it figuratively, like "we" meaning a body or a group, not meaning "we" meaning the council here. But I feel I cannot support this. And it's no disrespect to the town manager, not saying he did not do his due diligence and he, you know, worked hard to present his side of the budget. Not saying that other counselors may not, may have spent a lot of time on their budget or however, you know. But for me, I feel that we owe the department heads and the community to show that we allow the department heads to come before us and make their argument for the cuts that the town manager made. We may still stick with the town manager's number, or I may still stick with the town manager's number, but I feel that process has to happen. And, you know, even though I did go through it, fully prepared to go line by line with my questions publicly, I think we all have that obligation. That's what I feel I was elected to do, and I didn't get that chance to do that this year. And I don't feel, even if I thought there may have been a minor cut to the Board of Ed or whatever I thought my thoughts were, the only major cuts being to Board of Ed Education as the decrease in the town managers, I just, just for me, don't see that as what I want to put my name attached to. I don't feel comfortable with it. And I just feel that we needed to put in the time. Maybe we didn't need to do all the days. Maybe it could have went a little bit faster if everybody was in such agreement to, with the town manager's numbers and there were no other cuts. We should have at least gave the department heads a chance to come before us. And I just feel like that's the biggest part, the, you know, financial responsibility. And I might, and the town manager can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe what he said is he has control over, what is it, 30% of the budget? Is that correct, through the mayor? Roughly. And the council has the remaining. So, by just taking the town manager's budget, which I think he did a great job, 3% is modest. I'm not saying I wouldn't have picked that. I just want to go through the deliberation and the proper process. And I was watching all the local other towns do theirs, especially with the federal government's monies. And they made some hard decisions and the council all went through it. So, for me, I can't stand with the cut to education solely as our main cut. It's just not a good message, especially what's going on in the federal government. So, for me today, I am going to not support this. And as it moves to the RTM, I still hope that they are going to go through it, somebody. Because I think it deserves its full time. I think the town manager puts his effort and work into it. And I think we, like I said, financial arm, we have an obligation to go through it and review it. And I don't feel that we have. So, those are my thoughts. I speak solely for myself. But I thank you for presenting and thank the town manager for his budget. And just to be clear, in the town manager's budget, did he make any cuts to education?
I'm not allowed to.
No. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to, I also want for the record that we made $1.18 million in savings to the taxpayers in the capital reserve fund. I don't want that work to go unnoticed, which is a substantial amount of money. It's about a quarter of a mil, if I'm doing the math correctly, on the fly. So, that's a major difference to our local taxpayers, and I just want that on the record. And that's it. Thank you. Go back.
Thank you. Counselor Bordaline.
With no disrespect to my fellow colleague over there, Counselor Gajewski, yes, it was a 1 point...
Counselor Bordaline, you cannot speak directly to people.
Sure, I won't. Based on the comment that was stated, the 1.8 was a substantial cut, but it would, to me, I cannot support it. It was done on one night and only to education. And nowhere else did we go through it line by line. So, yes, it was substantial, but I feel there could have been other cuts possibly made. With a 3-point-something increase that the town manager is proposing, some numbers in there could have been moved in other departments where maybe some got less and some got more. And we didn't do that. So, I can respect that it's a 1.8. It just wasn't delegated, in my opinion, in the right areas, and I cannot support that all coming off of education. Thank you.
Counselor McByd.
Thank you. Just a few comments. First off, I do want to say that I did have ample opportunity to review the budgets. I did ask numerous questions to Town Manager Burt on his side of the budget and received proper responses. I also had several comments of the Board of Ed and received comments back from them. The process, although it changed, and I may not have been a huge fan of it at the beginning, I think it, I think it worked out okay. My concern with this, with me voting in favor of this, isn't to do with the process or anyone. My concern is the one day that we had for deliberations on the budget, I was not present. And that's for my own fault because I had another obligation. I did have numerous questions that were raised that night on the Board of Ed, and I appreciate Counselor...
Jones.
I give me any notes I can talk out of my head. I appreciate Counselor Jones reading some of my comments on the Board of Ed's budget, but I was not, I feel like I didn't fulfill my duty to be present that evening and participate in the budget. So, I'm going to be abstaining, but it's not about the process, it's not about what transpired. It's about I wasn't able to fulfill my duties as best as I can. So, that's why I'll be abstaining. Thank you.
All right. Well, I would just like to make a few comments here. So, I just want, I did hear something that was said, and 30% is the town budget. And the council is not left to figure out the remaining. Basically, 63% of the budget is the school budget. So, I mean, that adds up to like 93%, and then we have 7% left over for other things. So, I will say the council went through CIPs in full. That's where we spend typically millions of dollars on things that, that's typically where you can cut. I went through the budget, fully went through the budget, and I'll take responsibility. I'm the one that put it on the floor to do the town's budget in one fell swoop because honestly, I went through it and I couldn't see much of anything to cut. I mean, we could have nitpicked a few things, but honestly, I didn't think it was, it wasn't worth doing so. And I also received communications from many department heads, as well as outside agencies, reaching out to me congratulating our council for passing the budget in the one fell swoop. And they were appreciative of it. And this includes the outside agencies, as well as some department heads. So, I don't find it a need to just go through the process, to go through the process, when it all seems good to begin with. So, I didn't, I personally didn't see a reason to go line by line and just sit here for probably what typically would have been 40 hours' worth of work, when there was nothing that I could see to change and my fellow counselors agreed. And with that, I also did not hear anybody asking for a reconsideration of any line item or asking to go back and discuss a certain topic, because everybody here has the right to make a reconsideration, put it on the table during that time period, and get a second on it, and then vote to do a reconsideration. So, everybody has, you know, rights to do something. Nobody's rights were taken away. Anybody could have came forward with a reconsideration, and I didn't hear any of that either. So, I will happily vote to pass this on to the RTM.
All right. Seeing no other hands, we're going to vote on 2025-394, approving FYE 2026 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
McBride abstains.
Mayor, I just want to point out that Counselor Parker arrived a couple, two minutes ago online.
Okay. Counselor Parker, did you want to vote on this item? This was approving the FYE 2026 budget?
Aye.
Thank you. So, that passes seven to one to one. Bordaline opposed? And McBride abstaining. Okay. Up next, 2025-410, computation of tax rate for general fund, FYE 2026. This is on page 37 of our packet. Counselor Parker, did you want to take this one? Are you able to?
No, I'm driving.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to take that one?
I have the page number in, sorry.
It begins on 37.
37. Thank you. I just flipped to the front. Item 2025-410, computation of tax rate for general fund, FYE 26. Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for general fund, FYE 2026. So, moved.
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. All right. Seeing no hands, we're going to vote on 2025-410, computation of tax rate for general fund, FYE 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right. That passes eight to one to zero, with Bordaline opposed. Up next, 2025-412, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2026. This is on page 43. Counselor McBride.
Thank you. 2025-412, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District for the fiscal year ending 2026. Like to make a motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for Mumford Cove for fiscal 2026.
Second, Jones.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Bordaline.
And again, I'm just opposing all these, not because I think the number's bad, just the process in which we got to them. I'm just abstaining from opposing all of it because I just didn't feel like I had the chance to really go through it. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll take a vote on 2025-410, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Bordaline, are you opposed? I didn't, I didn't hear which one you were saying aye to. I'm sorry.
It was, I was opposed.
Abstentions? All right. That passes eight to one to zero, with Bordaline opposed. Up next, 2025-411, computation of tax rate for Sewer District, FYE 2026. This is on page 44. Counselor Jones.
2025-411, computation of tax sewer, tax rate for Sewer District, FYE 2026. Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for the Groton Sewer District, FYE 2026. So, moved.
Second, Pacino.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Bordaline.
I just want to, through the mayor, through the, admit to the town manager, this pretty much pays for itself through its own funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I'll vote for this one because that one, it doesn't change anything, in my opinion.
All right. All those, we'll take a vote on 2025-411, computation of tax rate for Sewer District, FYE 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. We're going to take a recess from the committee of the whole. We're now going into the town council special meeting agenda. All right. These are items that we just basically passed right in Cow, and now we're going to be doing so in the town council. It is 7:18, and we'll be calling the April 26th, April 22nd, Special Town Council Meeting Agenda Order. All are present. All right. New business. All right. Item number one, 2025-393-1, setting the RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2026, town budget. Counselor Russ, do you want to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I make a resolution that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at 6:00 PM at Thrive 55 Plus Active Living Center Hybrid Virtual Meeting, 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut. So, moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Jones. Really shouldn't be much discussion on this. We just passed these things in committee of the whole. All right. Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-393-1, setting RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2026, town budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Abstention. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-394-1, approving FYE 2026 budget. All right. This is on page four. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. Page three. I'm sorry. Page three.
And you have to read it all?
I get a reader. I was going to say, where's the resolution on this? I brought my glasses. Item 2025-394, approving FYE 2026 budget resolution. Resolved that the budgets for the various funds thereafter set forth are hereby approved and adopted in the amounts of the total appropriation line in the hereby appropriated for functions specified. And the amounts listed under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget items, approved budget estimates for the type of revenues specified and include all estimated FYE 2026 cash revenues except FYE 2026 current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by separate resolution when the FYE 2026 tax rate is set. And further, that the, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of the record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for public record for the budgets as follows. General Fund, Golf Course Fund, Sewer Operating Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Mumford Cove Special Taxing District. Revali... Reval, revaluation. I hate that that was revaluation. Revaluation Fund, Recreation and Thrive 55 Plus Activities Fund, Borrow IT, Connecticut, Sewer District Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, Fleet Fund, Technology Replacement Fund, Human Services Assistant Fund, Assistance Fund, and HS Assistance Fund. So, moved.
Second. Moved by Pacino.
Second.
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Russ. Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-394-1, approving FYE 2026 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Passes eight to zero to one, with Bordaline abstaining. Up next, 2025-410-1, computation of tax rate for general fund, FYE 2026. All right. This one is on page four. Counselor Merritt, would you like to take that one?
Thank you. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2026 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the general fund budget as adopted by the town council. Do you wish me to read the...
All of it.
Okay. Whereas the town council adopted on April 22nd, 2025, a general fund budget providing their expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling $159,603,722 and estimated cash revenue, revenues exclusive of FYE 2026 current property taxes totaling $41,155,000. million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. Be it resolved that a tax rate of twenty-four point eight-seven mils is hereby determined as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total general fund appropriations per budget approved by council, one hundred and fifty-nine million, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Less general fund cash receipts exclusive of FYE 2026 current property taxes, forty-one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Less the amount to be appropriated from the unassigned fund, two million dollars. Amount to be raised from property taxes, one hundred and sixteen million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Amount computed as follows. One hundred and sixteen million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-six divided by the net assessed valuation before board of assessment adjustments of four million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine.
That's a billion. Let's start with four billion.
Oh, four billion, seven hundred and thirty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, twelve dollars divided by ninety-eight point eight percent collection rate multiplied by a thousand equals twenty-four point eight-seven mil rate. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Merritt, seconded by Russ. These are not easy ones.
It's great.
All right, seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on 2025-410-1, computation of tax rate for the general fund, FYE 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes eight to one to zero with Bordalan opposed. Up next, 2025-412-1, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2026. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to take this one? I believe it's on page five.
Yep, ready to go. Item 2025-412, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2026. Resolution, resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2026 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Mumford Cove Special Taxing District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April twenty-second, 2025, a Mumford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling twenty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, and estimate cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2026 current property taxes totaling fifty-five dollars. Be it resolved that a tax rate of zero point two eight mils is hereby determined as required by chapter-
Nine.
Nine, thank you, of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Mumford Cove District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Less estimated amount to be appropriated for unassigned fund balance, zero dollars. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, fifty-five dollars. Amount to be raised from property taxes, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Amount computed as follows, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four divided by net assessed valuation of seventy-six million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and six dollars before board of assessment adjustments divided by ninety-nine point six percent collection rate multiplied by one thousand equals a zero point two eight mil rate, so moved.
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-412-1, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
That passes eight to zero to one. Bordalan abstaining. Up next, 2025-411-1, computation of tax rate for sewer district, FYE 2026. Counselor McBride, this is on page six.
Thank you. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for fiscal year in 2026 to pay expenses per ends appropriations and per ends approved in the Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April twenty-second, 2025, a Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine, and estimated cash revenue exclusive of fiscal year in 2026 current property taxes totaling twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty. Be it resolved that a tax rate of point three eight mils is hereby determined as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Council, Groton Town Charter, and based on the following computations. The total Groton Sewer District Fund appropriations per the budget approved by the council is one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Less the estimated amount to be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance of fifty thousand dollars. Less the cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes of twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to determine the amount to be raised from property taxes of one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand and nine dollars. The amount computed as follows. One million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand and nine dollars is divided by the net asset, assessed valuation of three billion, one hundred and twenty-six million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four per ends before the board of assessment adjustments and excludes motor vehicles and per ends divided by the ninety-nine point seven percent collection rate multiplied by one thousand equals zero point three eight mils.
Second.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Russ. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for the director. The reason that this is three billion as opposed to the tax rate, which was based on four billion, is because the sewer is only for the town of Groton and not the city of Groton? Is that correct?
This fund covers everything, I think, except for the city and the Navy.
So just, the city's not included in this fund?
No.
Okay, that's the reason that it's a billion less because in evaluation.
Oh, in the valuation.
In the valuation.
The city's not part of this.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted, that's the reason the difference. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-411-1, computation of tax rate for the sewer district, FYE 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. All right, we will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the exec, the special meeting of the town council?
Second.
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Parker, I didn't hear your vote. Thank you. Passes nine to zero to zero. It is seven thirty-two PM.
Thank you.
We adjourned the town, special town council meeting. Thank you. We are back to the committee of the whole meeting. Up next is probably going to be quite the discussion. I would like to take a quick ten-minute break before we start this one, if you don't mind. It is seven thirty-three, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you.
Okay, it is 7:49. We are back from recess. All right, first up, 2025-242-2 Athletic Fields Discussion. This is on page 45 of our packet and there is no motion made in advance of the agenda.
Mr. Ed?
Sure. As a way of a little bit of background, going all the way back to February of 20, the council received an update on the state of the athletic fields. Around that time, they authorized the creation of the Athletic Field Task Force, who had their first meeting in June of 20. A little thing of COVID was going on and it slowed everything up. But this last January 28th of this year, the town council received the presentation on their findings from the Athletic Fields Task Force. I do on pages 78, 79, I don't have the full original presentation there, but I did put a couple of highlights. You could see the configuration of fields and the costs that were associated. Again, page 78, 79, in case you're interested. The, we followed up with another meeting on March 11th this year. Further, it was a presentation in January, not a whole lot of discussion. We then started really discussing it March 11th of this year. I was asked to reach out to our finance manager, to our financial advisor, to get some bond scenarios, including especially for a reduced high school version with leaving out like the, the practice field, some of that, try to get a, you know, what's the basic stuff we could do and still do the stadium along with ancillary stuff, the football stadium. And then those scenarios, which you can actually see those, the bond scenarios on page 46 to 48 that were presented on March 11th, actually 46 to 48 is the, is the configuration of the fields, just the maps of them, the layouts of them. 74 to 77 are the bond scenarios. We went over those on April 11th. The council asked for some further bond scenarios, which we are, I am presenting tonight. The new scenarios are in pages 49 to 69, again, bond scenarios, based on the request from the council, further requests. Page 70 is a breakdown of, I was asked to look at a four-phase, a four-year phased-in approach, which I tried my best to break it out as evenly as possible. That's on page 70. You'll see the numbers under the scenarios, but I wanted you to see page 70, so you can see what's entailed there, and I'll reference those as we get into there. And then I put some of the numbers side by side, so you can see a comparison on page 71 through 73. So I'm going to move on to page, to the new bond scenarios, page 49.
Point of information? Any question?
Can we put some of these, like, up for people that are following?
Okay.
Especially like page, I don't know.
Mary, would you like that on?
It'd be helpful.
Would you like me to pull up the agenda?
That's fine, if you'd like to.
So again, page 49, not easy to see, but if people will be able to see these in their agenda packets, if they have trouble seeing it on the screen, the first-
I think it's page 52.
Oh, sorry, 52, sorry. The beginning of the packet there started at 49. So page 52 now. The, this is for the amount of bond for $13,685,000, that for 10 years, a 10-year bond. This is for the football stadium with necessary improvements that have to be, amenities that have to be done with it. This is, we looked at this configuration at the last meeting. The, if you look under the P and I, the second boxed area, the first boxed area is existing bond debt service. This is similar to what you saw last, at the previous cow. If you move on to the bonds, 2026, 13,685. If you go down, you'll see what the payment schedule looks like, with a total price for 10 years of $17,500,700. And then if you go further over, you'll see proposed new total. If you take what we already owe with these, with this new projection, you'll see the total new debt service. And again, here's what we owe now, if you look on the screen here. Here's the proposed new debt service. If you've selected that option, here's the total of current and proposed new, and this is what the change annually in payment would be from one year to the next. For instance, for instance, in 27, in 2027, you'd be paying 9.9 million. The next year, 10,345,000, which is an additional 416,000, and so on. Moving on to the next page, same project, football stadium, but for 15 years. And that, going over 15 years, of course, you incur more interest during that time. The cost would be 18,676,000. So it's, you know, about 1 point, a little under 1.2 million more over the life of the bond. So same type of thing.
Same type of-
That's weird. I don't know what caused that. Moving on to same thing, but for 20 years, on page 54. Same thing again, same project, football stadium, but for 20 years. Over the life of 20 years, the total cost would be 20,236,600. So again, the further out you push it, the longer the bond life, the more interest you incur.
Point of information? Your question?
Just making sure I'm understanding from my own notes, the amount that you're referring to over these gradual extended years is just the 13,000 stadium, or is it the whole-
Just the stadium with required amenities. You have to have some work going up to a side amenities. Yeah, this is one of the versions the town council had asked for.
Okay, I just, because I just want to make sure I'm, hold on one second, sorry, I flipped my page and I lost my spot. Because the whole high school is 37,000. So this amount is just the stadium with the, it's not including restrooms, it's not including the field house, and it's not including that other field. Is that correct?
Correct.
These scenarios. So it's just-
This first batch of scenarios.
Right, that this is just the stadium with the bleachers and-
It's where the green is there.
Right, I just want everyone to be aware of-
But that does cover some bathrooms.
It does cover some bathrooms?
Not this first scenario.
Not there on the top right corner of it?
No.
Okay.
It's just, you have to do some work to get, to lead people to that, some site work.
Correct.
This is a required site work.
So this is like improving some ADA compliance and just like you said, site work for kind of entry pointing.
And replacing the entire stadium, yeah.
Right, but not including restrooms?
No field house.
Field house.
Right.
Nothing else. It's basically the field and the bleachers.
Yes.
And the curb side getting-
And the track.
Well, the field is the track, because you couldn't have it without the same. So it's just that whole stadium. Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear for 13, so.
All right. And the next two scenarios I'll be going over will include that football stadium number?
Yep.
Plus the field house, but not the parking and drive or the restrooms. That'll be a third scenario. So again, the next numbers I'm going to go over will be football stadium, field house.
A point of information?
Your question?
Not the separate field either, right? The secondary?
Correct, that's on any of these versions.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Until we get to the entire project version.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Okay, now going on to page 55. Debt of 22,476,000. Again, this is for the football stadium and required site work, as well as the field house. Again, 22,476,000 for 10 years. So this is a 10-year scenario. The total cost for that would be 28,748,600. Moving on to the 15-year version, going from 10 to 15, page 56. You'll see a total of 30,678,150. And then again, the 20-year debt version on page 57. Total cost through the life of the 20 years, 33,229,775. Moving on to page 58. We are looking at football stadium, field house, the extra restroom, and the parking lot. This is slightly more than the last version by adding the parking lot and the extra, the side restrooms in. 23,379,000. And again, this first version will have 10 years. The total cost over 10 years for this bond is, again, 29,897,050.
Point of information?
Your question?
Just want to be clear for my notes, just for people, because not every field house. So the field house, when we say secondary, we're saying the primary, if we add the field house, would have the primary restrooms?
The restrooms that are up on the upper right. I'll go back to it again. Yeah, there's restrooms in the field house.
Okay.
But then there's that one that's up a little bit to the upper right.
So when you say secondary, you're saying including the field house and this one?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I'll start again, though.
Yeah, I know where it's located here, but I just-
Just for the public, I'll show it.
So there's, there'll be restrooms in the field house, and then if we add the secondary, it would give us the one-
And then this restroom right here.
Correct.
Correct.
But without that one or the field house, there are no restrooms in the other proposals?
Correct. Right, no change to the restrooms.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying.
I have clarification.
Any question?
The field house restrooms would only be used by athletes, correct? So there was discussion about the bathrooms in the field house. Those would not be used by the general public, correct? Only athletes?
I can't speak to that myself.
Okay, thank you.
Moving to page 59. Again, looking at that third version, 23,379,000, but this time for 15 years instead of 10 years. It would be 31,912,600 for the life of the 15 years. So by about 2 million for interest. And then moving on to 20-year version on page 60, for that same configuration, total cost of 34,571,563, again, over a 20-year lifespan. And then the council had asked me to look at what kind of effect would issuing bands for the first two years, that's a bond anticipation note, basically just paying interest for the first two years and then going into the, just like that's what we're doing right now for the final bit of the school 2020 project. We keep floating those bands every year until we have a final amount that we know we have to bond for. So moving on to page 62. This is going back to that initial just football stadium, the 13,685,000, but this is for 15 years. We did just one version of 15 years with the two-year bands. If you look, you'll see the change in this one is you'll see the existing bond debt service, which is the same as you've been seeing. You'll see the first year ban, that 525,394. Second year ban, again, you're just paying interest while you're, before you bond for it to buy some time. And then your actual full bond issuance would be the third year. So first year, for ban one, you'd have 525,000 cost and change, 539, 540 for year two, and then 18,333.
Million.
What?
18 million.
18 million, sorry. I wish. 18,333,788 for the actual bond issuance.
Point of information?
Your question?
So my question is, page 62 relates to which?
Page 52 and 53.
So 62 relates to 52?
52, 53, 54.
Yes.
What you're looking at is 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay.
Yes, it's that first version of just the football stadium.
53 and 54, okay.
And I'm going to, at the end of this, show you, I put some of these numbers side by side, just on costs, so you can see them side by side. But moving on to the next page, page 64. This is for all those things, and that, this is that third scenario, the, did I skip one? Sorry, I skipped one. Go to page 63. Go to page 63.
This relates to?
This is the second scenario, the football field and the field house. No extra bathrooms, no parking lot. So again, this is the 22,476,000, 15 years, but doing two years of bands. Again, paying interest only for two years. Year one, you have 864,920 for the band the first year, 886,722 for the band for the second year. And then you, third year, again, you start the, the bond issuance, 30,113,283. And then third version is also including the restrooms and the parking lot, page 64. First year, bond issuance, 899,669. Second year, 922,347. And then total for the bond issuance without the bands, 31,323,918. Again, these were all for 15 years. So you can see what kind of effect the bands have on them by pushing off, just paying interest for two years.
Point of information.
Your question? I appreciate all this. What I don't see is, like, just a scenario played out over time for the full Fitch High School arrangement at 37,000. Because these scenarios, it's not in here, like, it's?
The council, the will of the council was not to do?
Okay, okay, so it's the will?
Yeah, these are the specific ones that were asked for.
Oh, okay, because I just thought the will, the folks wanted Fitch High School first, so I was just confused. Okay.
Point of information.
Your question?
Statement more. With all due respect?
Are you using your time?
No.
If you have a question, or you could finish describing?
It's 37 million, not 37,000.
I meant to say 37 million. Thank you for correcting me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Burr.
Okay, moving on to the requested four-year phase-in approach that we discussed, that would be for all of the original costs, 56.5 million. And before, and I was asked, okay, create a scenario where you break it into four years, which is, you know, a bit random. So what I did, if you go to page 70, and let me zoom in here a little bit, you'll see how I broke out that four years, just to try to get money dollars somewhat equalized as much as I could. So again, this could be configured any which way, it's just a scenario to look at, and it could be reconfigured if the council was interested in that approach. Year one, Fitch High School football stadium, along with the parking lot, total cost, 14, 265,200. Year two is the field house, remaining site work and restrooms, 13,719,800. Year three, softball field, and then the Claude Chester work, total of 15,740,730. And then year four, the multi-use field at the high school, and then all the remaining, all the Sutton Park work, total of 12,802,600. So again, four-year approach, now going back up to the bond numbers. So going back to page 66. Here, again, we're looking at the existing debt service in that first box. And then the next four boxes are years one, two, three, and four, based on those numbers they just went through. Year one bond being the 14,265,000. This is, these are 10-year bonds, by the, each one would be a 10-year bond, by the way. So if you look through that, year one total cost over the life of the 10 years would end up costing 18,243,350. The year two bond issuance would eventually cost a total of, which is 13,720,000, would eventually with interest be 17,423,750. The third year, which is 15, a bond issuance of 50,740,000, through the life of the bond with interest would be 19,531,950. And then year four, which would be a bond issuance of 12,803,000, through the life of the bond for the 10 years, the total would be 15,811,150. So this would be then to do the entire, all the earlier requested work from the original presentation, and then, and then for the 56,528,000. So you're bonding for the 56,528, but the total cost by the end with interest would be, oh, it's total new. Let's see, I don't, sorry, I don't have a, I didn't calculate that. Just a second, I didn't calculate. If you add those four numbers up, it would be the total cost. Let me just do it real quick.
71 million, 10,200.
Which page are you on?
He was adding up the four numbers.
On which page?
71,210,000.
10,200.
I have 71 million, 10,200.
Okay. For an original issuance of 56,528,000.
Which page?
66.
Page 66, those four numbers on the bottom.
Yep.
I will re-add them just to make sure my math isn't?
Well, we can round to 71 million, to be just sort of?
Yeah, that's what I got, too.
So I think that's what, about 14,500 in interest over the life of the bonds. And then, let's see.
Your question?
Would this require four referendums, one every year?
You can do it either way. You could do, you can structure it as one, though, over that kind of life and the changes and costs that can occur, I would say do it in pieces. Or else, it'd be really hard to know exactly what you're going to pay. As you, the further you get into this, the less reliant. Even as of now, before we would do anything here for now, we'd want to, you know, the interest rates could completely change, the cost of materials could completely change. So anytime you do anything, you want updated numbers before you do it. So you don't want to do things too far out. So I would say do them each year, but, I mean, of course, yeah, I would say do four referendums, but it's up to the council. You have different options. Moving on to page 67. This is the same material, same information, but for 15 years. So you'll see the life of the four different bonds for 15 years instead of 10 years. Year one, the 2026 issuance, 14,265,000, total cost would be 19,468,800. Second issuance, 13,720,000, life of the 15 years would be 18,686,150. Year three, 15,740,000, 21,89,750 total cost by the life of the bond, 15 years. And then finally, year four, 12,803,000, total life cost of 17,428,300. Anybody calculate those yet?
17,428,300.
Excuse me, what was it?
I have 76.4.
I have 76,673.
All right, I'm just rounding them. I didn't add all the numbers.
I totally, oh, I missed one, 76,673. Yeah, sorry.
So about 20 million in interest during the life of the bond. And then?
And like five point something over the 10-year.
Five point six.
And then moving on to page 68, same scenarios, but for 20 years. Year one, total life of the, first bond, total life cost, 21,90,563. Year two, life cost, 20,288,595. Year three, issuance, 22,931,981. And then fourth year, total cost of through the life, 18,934,160.
I have around 83 million as a rounded number.
Yep.
26 million-ish for interest. And then I'm going to jump to page 71. These are just me taking those original scenarios, first scenario, 13,685,000, again, just the football stadium. And I just put side by side what their cost would be for 10 years, 15 years, 15 years with two-year bands, the interest-only payments, and then 20 years, just so you can kind of see what the difference is and what the total cost is. So you'll see across the bottom, 17,500,700 for the 10-year version, moving up to 18,676,000 for the 15 years. Moving up to 19,399,82 for the 15 years with two-year bands. And then 20 years would be 20,236,600. So just so you can kind of get a picture of the differences between the different ones. If you're ready, I'll go on to the next page. Moving on to page 72. Same type of scenario, but with 22,476,000. That is the field house and the football stadium. And again, across the bottom, you'll see the difference between for 10 years, the total cost is 28,748,600. For 15 years, the total cost is 30,678,150. 15 years with two-year bands, 31,884,925. And then 20 years, 33,229,775. Basically, you keep progressing lowest to the highest of about four and a half million swing. And then moving to the next page, which would include the football stadium, the field house, the rest, extra restrooms, and the parking lot, 23,379,000. 10-year scenario would be 29,897,50. 15-year scenario would be 31,912,600. 15-year scenario with two-year bands would be 33,145,934. And then 20 years, total would be 34,571,563. So kind of likewise, cost increase through the life. And that is the information I have to present. I know it's a lot of numbers, you know, and there's a lot of correct scenarios, and it's all what people are comfortable and what people want.
All right, I'm going to just start myself. There is a lot of numbers here. On page 70 is the four-year phase-in approach. This has also been referenced in bonding for, on page 66, 67, and 68.
Right.
On options. This is the type of option that I would like, simply by starting with one item at a time. And if next year something happens, then maybe it could be put off if the markets are not favorable. And even this year, if we start with phase one, and we get closer to the time period, we can reevaluate before this actually goes out to referendum. But also, it's been noted also as a phase-in approach, because you don't want to do all the construction at one time anyway. So this is what makes a lot of sense, is doing a phase-in approach. And as you can see, even on page 68, in the final column where it says annual change to debt services is semi-minimal, and then it actually goes into the negative. So the amount the council would have to, I guess, try and use for taxes would be minimal in those first couple of years without having a large increase. As I saw in other places, there could be millions instead of just smaller amounts. So this is like, for me personally, I like this approach, and I think it is a responsible one for the taxpayers, our community. And I know I am all about athletic fields, trust me. But I think you have to do it in a very responsible manner. So that would be my choice.
Point of information.
Your question?
Which, I just missed the beginning of which one you picked.
It's on page 70. And it's, there's a four-phase approach.
So it would be all of them?
It would be all of them, and it, it's basically a path to achieve them all, if possible. Councilboard line.
Thank you. I guess with page 70 really being the only option, I guess for me, what I heard from the community, with all due respect, the time was not set for the mayor as well, so I just ask that if we're going to be that much of a stickler on mine that we are on everybody?
Councilboard line, that's not the topic on the floor. Can you please?
I'm speaking, and you made sure my time started, and I gave you the grace I thought wasn't started.
I didn't realize my time didn't start. And honestly, this is frivolous discussion.
Sure. Frivolous to you, but important to me.
You have your three minutes.
Thank you, I'm using it. Thank you. With that, unfortunately, I didn't obviously have the consensus of the council to show the numbers. Thank you to the town manager for presenting the numbers. We should have also, in my opinion, but I didn't have the consensus, so they weren't created, what that, those numbers would look like for the full Fitch High School by itself. And here we have pieces, but not the full 37 number. Overwhelmingly, the folks came out and spoke, and they, a majority of people spoke and said they wanted Fitch to be the number-one priority. The only phase here that gets that done is page 70 with the four phases, based on what was presented tonight as an option, looking at those numbers. I am concerned when we extend the numbers out 20 years, because then, you know, at that point, we're not even done paying off the stadium, and there's already repairs and replacements that will be needed. A 20-year-old bathroom, a 20-year-old this, a 20-year-old that, and we're still owing on it. So that is a concern to me. But based on this, like the mayor said, I'm a firm supporter of athletic fields, you know, was part of the original group before the council even agreed to appoint an athletic fields group to kind of get involved in this, in fact, before 2020, people had reached out. It's long overdue, and we need to do something. My only concern is, I want something binding. So if we're going to do this, I took through the mayor, through the town manager, if we do page 70's approach, which trickles it in, unfortunately, though, the first phase gives us no relief on bathrooms. That's a concern. So I don't know if this could be moved around a little bit, because the field house and the restrooms don't come until the second phase. As we heard with the federal government and all the other things, phase two, when would that come? I don't know who's going to be up here for councilors, you know, what binding, if we do this page, how, we need something binding. We can't dance around the issue anymore. It has to be done. And that's what the community wants. So if we're going to do phase one and phase two over time, we can't sit with a football stadium and a parking lot curb entry for how long? No bathrooms, nothing else done. So that is my concern. For the mayor and the town manager, how would we have to write this so whoever comes along, these phases would be followed?
Well, every town council can do what they want, so there's no way to bind future councils other than once you issue a bond, then you're paying for them, but outside of that. And I should say, you know, these are just an initial scenario for these four phases. The restrooms could easily be moved up, and I'm not the, the, I should not be the final say on these phases. The athletic director, Chad Frost, and the others, you know, would want to look at this and see what phases. I'm just trying to give an idea of, if you reasonably broke them up into like numbers, what would it look like?
Yeah, I understand your approach, and I appreciate it. I'm just, again, I didn't have the numbers, obviously, as it was stated, to get the other scenario on the full floor, which would look like, what would the full Fitch High School phase out over time would look like? I'd love to see that.
Well, if you take the first two options, the 13 million and change, and the 22 million, it adds up very close to the full project. So you could take those two and add them together, and it'd be within a million of it.
Right, because to me, that's a strong statement to the community. I think that is the first phase that I would want to put forward, would be those two numbers. And that way, we leave as a council, no matter, with that option moving forward. This, like this, could sit another 15, 5, 8, I mean, we don't know, with a curb side and a, and a parking curb side and a football stadium, which is a track with the bleachers. My time's going to run out. That's my concern. I agree that it will take time to put each in, but I need something a little bit more binding, and I just don't hear it here.
Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am all for this four-year phased-in plan. I like the idea that in the next four years, with the current administration, if things go sideways, we have options. If we try to do this in a binding way, it might hurt our constituents and hurt future town councils in a way that is? town councils in a way that is irreparable. I think this is a really good way to go, and this is what I'm going to vote for, understanding that whatever is in each phase may get jumbled around a little bit differently. Doesn't matter to me, four years, it's going to go great. Thank you.
Counselor Merritt.
Well, from the past, what I've heard of, of the athletic fields and the amenities involved, I think this is about the closest we've come to getting something done. And I think it's time to draw a line and say, this is what we want, let's get it done now. Let's move forward. Because every year you add on and wait, the cost goes up, and this figure changes. And then you have to redo it over again. And that's all we're doing, is the old phrase of kicking the can down the road. That's well-known by this council and others before us.
Counselor Rusk, did you have your hand up?
Just a point of information.
Mm-hmm. No question.
I guess through the mayor to counselor, Merritt, which phase did he state? I didn't hear if you happened to hear, maybe you can just tell me.
He didn't state.
I didn't.
Oh, okay. You're just speaking. Do you have a suggestion of which way to move?
Counselor Bordelain.
Counselor Bordelain, you can't be, you can't ask Counselor Merritt questions like that.
I asked through you.
No, I'm saying you can't. He made his statement.
I'm just clarifying.
Counselor Rusk, are you, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Counselor Rusk.
Are we good? Yeah, we're good.
Counselor Bordelain, please, stop making noises down there. It's unnecessary. Thank you.
Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Burt, for putting this all together. I know it's a lot of work, so I definitely appreciate getting these numbers. I know that, you know, we could move some things around. I guess my, the concerns that I'm hearing is one that we do it all, that the people who have come before us have said they want it all done. I think this is a fiscally responsible way to get it all done, to have a plan, spread it out over four years. You can't do all of this construction in a year anyways, so if we spread it out over four years, I feel like it's a, it's a good way to do it. The questions that I've gotten from constituents are that the fieldhouse is not ADA compliant, and the restrooms are horrible. So that being said, I would push that those either get pushed up to Phase 1, or that we make some sort of an accommodation in the meantime. So whether that means we fund the restrooms through a CIP next year, or that we put some sort of a trailer, which I know is not the same as having a fieldhouse for women, but to have something there that female athletes can use in the meantime, until the fieldhouse can be built. I don't know if that even falls under our purview, or if the Board of Ed would need to do that. So I guess that's my question.
The Board, for, in terms of adding the $323,000 restrooms, the Board of Ed would make a CIP request to the town, and we'd handle it, you know, typically through the budget process, but it could be done potentially otherwise during the mid-cycle. And then it would be up to them, you know, to build in a budget to put something on-site otherwise.
Okay, so if we don't pass the fieldhouse or the restrooms in this first round, it would be up to the Board of Ed to move it forward, to kind of put a Band-Aid on it until it can be done.
Correct.
Okay. I, again, I'm all for this four-year approach. I would love to do it all in one fell swoop, but I don't think that that is fiscally responsible. So thank you again for putting this all together.
Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager, how much faith do you have in any of these numbers as being accurate at this time?
Well, the further you go out, the, you know, the less, I know they've tried to account as much as they can for that, but nobody accounts for it right now. You know, we'd take a, I think you'd want to take another look at costs shortly before the September deadline, if you were trying to get November. With Phase 4, though, you're going to have some more work to do on this. I think November would be very difficult to hit this year with that. However, you know, you can have a special bond referendum at any point, it's a cost to, of course, but the charter does allow for that. But, you know, you're going to have some work done, and it'll be very tight unless they can turn it around, like, you know, the people that will really make the decisions on how that would phase out, it would be a very tight turnaround.
So just do Phase 1 for November, you say, is very difficult?
Well, I mean, if you settle it, but you're going to need to figure out the four-year phase to know what you're going to do Phase 1. You know, the experts on it, because they might have a totally different idea than me. They have to weigh in on it, look at it, might have some other suggestions. So they'll need some time with that. And then we'll need to rerun the numbers, you know, because it'll change up some before you can proceed. But, you know, I definitely would not do a referendum for, if you're going to, unless you're building it all at once, I think you would, you're setting yourself up for failure if you try to guess what something's going to cost two to four years from now. As it is, it'll be hard enough here for now. Interest rates could be completely different. I started getting notices personally on, oh, you've ordered this? I mean, by the way, you know, we're going to add $10 each thing you've ordered, you know, due to tariffs. So, you know, it's really unknown right now what's going to happen.
So I know this isn't very popular, but my view on this is to not put anything forward at this time, because the economic situation is just so undetermined. We have tariffs kicking in, interest rates. I don't, looking at the federal level, I don't see anything moving in a positive direction. Everything is moving in a negative direction in terms of just our financial future. And the town itself has commitments on bridges, on seawalls, on other commitments that we have to do something with, and we just have a lot of, you know, town financial pressure. This is so indeterminate on what these actual costs will be, once the tariffs kick in, which they're going to, they're starting to do now, and interest rates could go just completely wonky. So is it correct that, and you said that we could actually do a referendum at any time? We don't need to tie ourselves to a November election, we can just do it at any time.
Correct, but then it'll be a side cost, 30,000 or so, I think is usually the cost.
On an $18 million bond, it's kind of meaningless. The question I have is, and this is just sort of a technical question of how bonds work, if we bonded something for, let's say, $15 million bond, and so that's the bond that went out, and that's what we get in money. But the project, because of tariffs and inflation and all that kind of stuff, comes in at 20 million, what happens with that five extra million? Where does, who pays for that, and how does that work?
Okay, let me just, so the issuance, you're issuing bonds for 15 million, that's what you've got approval for in a referendum. Yeah, obviously, you know, we'll be, keep checking costs and see, you know, try, keep getting updated numbers to see what happens. Worst-case scenario, though, you're talking about that, you've, you only have 15 million from the, to bond. Well, once you've issued the bond, you've issued the bond, and you're going to have to pay it off. However, you know, do you want some pretty locked-in numbers before you actually issue the bond? You want to be pretty certain of what it's going to cost.
So if you issue a bond...
But then, let's say, you've got it approved for 15 million, you haven't yet issued the bonds, but you're finding out, oh, this is now 20 million. The town would either have to agree, you have three options. You'd either have to find other funding yourselves, not bond-related, to pay the difference. You'd have to go back out for another referendum for an additional amount, or you would pause the project.
So you could...
Referendum does not bind the council. It's issuing the bonds that pretty much binds the council.
So you could pause the project.
Yes.
You're not committed that you're forced to go fight, fight, and you could just sort of stop at the 15-million point, just do nothing, so.
Now, you know, sensitivities to the public, once you do the referendum, it's really hard to pull back, but, you know, things happen.
I mean, I'm just reluctant on, you know, anybody who's sort of in my age bracket, who's using retirement accounts and funds and watching their money just jump all over the place. I'm reluctant to put any more debt on anybody other than what we need to put in. So, and I think, because we can make a referendum at any point in the process, waiting until some of this sort of settles out, you know, with costs, you know, some of this settles out, at least we see where the federal government's going to go in September, where our own-town budgets are going to go, where, what kind of federal money is coming to our schools. I'm reluctant to, because once you start moving this down the road, it's like when you go out looking for buying a house, suddenly you're buying the house. So once this starts moving, the pressure will be to keep it going. So I'm just reluctant at this point. I mean, unfortunately, this is all colliding at the same time, so, which is unfortunate, because there's an enormous amount of work here. But for me, it's just, it's sort of wait for six months and see, see where the market is, and see what's happening, see where our country's at, and then make a decision at that point. And then there's lots of good options here to choose from. But just trying to commit to something and get it rolling out, for me, is just, is not the way that I'll be voting for, so.
Mr. Burt, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, you know, even if it was the wish of the council to, you know, to delay a bit, I would say keep working on things, because you, you want the experts' opinions on how those phases would be laid out, all that stuff. So you would, you know, I would say you keep working no matter what, towards it.
Counselor Merritt, for your second turn.
I'd just like to remind all that we are about this close from getting accomplished what we've wanted for the last several years. And I just don't want to go backwards or put a stall to it. Once it's done, it's done, it's what we wanted, and we're very close to that.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually in agreement with Counselor Jones. I'm hesitant in doing something right now. We do not know where things are going to go, and our interest rate could change. That has been fluctuating. So we're also still paying current bonds, and part of that is the schools, and I do not want to add more to our residents. It's going to affect a lot of families, and I'm not comfortable doing this now at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I think it's time to move this forward. I think we can pull the plug later, and the most important thing is, whatever we decide to do to move this forward, it's going to be the residents who vote in favor or not in favor of this. So I think, at least in my opinion, we continue to move this down the road. Couple points. Looked at the, and John Burt, thank you for putting this all together, it was a wealth of information, it was very helpful. The 10, 15, 20-year financing plan makes sense, in my opinion, I've mentioned this before, to use the 20-year financing, to spread it out, lower the annual debt service to match the benefits individuals are going to receive. I'm sure that the current high schools and all these projects we're looking at have been in existence for 30, 40, possibly 50 years. So I don't think it's fair to do 10 or 15 years, to have the residents pay in 10 to 15 years for these projects, when in 15 years from now, people are going to move in and get the benefit of these projects and not have to pay any taxes on them. So I think we should at least spread it out for 20 years financing, which lowers the cost and spreads it out for the users who are going to receive the benefits over 20 years. I understand you're going to pay more in total interest cost, but the total interest cost is going to be spread out to the people who are going to utilize the projects. Also, a couple of points on the annual debt service. I do like the phased-in plan that was put forth, and if we look at page 68, if we reference the proposed total new debt service, the 9.6 is where we're at currently. And yes, it does increase to 10.8, 10.8, 10.4, but I do want to bring to everyone's attention, if we go back to 2023, the town had 11.087 million in debt service, and '24, the town had 11.275 in debt service. So there are years, in the past few years, that have been much higher than what this proposed debt service is. And I don't think it's a huge increase, where it's going from 9.6 next year to 10.8, which is an increase, but I don't think it's a magnitude of increase that is unreasonable based upon the amounts of debt service the past few years. I also think, and this wasn't mentioned, I know nothing we can do now, but there's a way that we could take this four-year phased-in plan and actually introduce the bands into this to lower that 10.7, 10.8, or 10.8 during '27, '28, '29, '30, to lower the actual debt service and bring that P&amp;I down, because that is what is really the kicker, is what are we paying in our annual budget? And that's the number I think we need to be focused on. And again, it's not that significant of an increase. I'm also in favor, I have concerns over doing it in a phased approach, because if we do that, I think we're not, there's a possibility that this may not move forward. And if we're just going to do a piece of it, then we only do a piece of it, we don't complete the whole thing. So I would be in favor of doing a referendum for the full 56 million. And if economic circumstances change and we can't do it, we simply don't bond, or the council that's here doesn't bond it, well, at least we have the residents' approval to move forward with the 56 million bonding. And I'll save my comments for my second turn.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. As I stated before, if we, you know, the option that we have presented to us on page 70, restrooms would be lagged in that phased-in approach, and as it was stated, there's a possibility to move those around. We have to do something. Those bathrooms are inadequate, and we are at risk already. We can sit here, in my opinion, I'll speak for myself, the country can be in fear, or we can be proactive. Nobody, five years ago, when tariffs weren't even being, you know, there was just no initiative, this has sat for so long. Some of us weren't even even involved in politics, and this has been sitting. I remember speaking way before being in politics, and people tried to come together and bring up these fields a while back, and nothing has happened. Tariffs are going to happen, we got to buy soap, we got to live. I'm not going to stop buying certain items because I have to move on, we have to continue to live, we can't live in fear forever. We can monitor and be concerned, but when you have a need, you don't, you know, if your roof starts to leak, you don't say, well, let me wait for those tariffs, let me catch it with the buckets. We got to move on. We're at the bucket phase right now, down on some of those tracks and surfaces, you know, unsafe. The natural surface is like this, it looks like it has a cavity, it needs to be filled. The long jump thing hasn't been restructured since I was there. The throwing thing, it's a hazard. So we can, we can be the town that has sat, and I say "we," meaning past people that have been sitting up here for many years, that chose, as it was stated, kick the can down the road. Or we can say, make a stance and say, we care, and we want to invest in our structure. I feel we need to move forward, and it's not on the backs of us as a decision. Let the voters decide. We don't have to bear the burden of the responsibility. Put it to a referendum, in my opinion, and let the voters make a decision on what they want, if they're willing to make that risk. And if the numbers come out in favor, then we, as a council, then act on that as a town. I agree. Move this full 56 forward, let's see what the voters have to say, let's tell the town we care, and let's see if they back us. If the voters then don't back us and don't vote for it, then we can come back to the drawing board. I do not like spending, we have one thing saying we're worried about tariffs, another saying, well, we can go to referendum at any time and spend 30,000, or whatever the cost of the referendum is. That's money, that's a, that's a new sign, or a modification to some other structure. If I take 30,000, that's a lot of work you can do for 30,000. I think we do it this tax season, we tell the people we care, we put it on the referendum, take it off our shoulders. Let our voters tell us what they want, and then we move from there. I feel, as a nine-body up here, you know, we have a chance to allow the voters to have a weight in on this, and that's the power of a referendum. So if those numbers come back, then we can talk later. But to now, send it to the voters. That's where I stand. Let's move.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I threw you to Mr. Burt. If this passes, if this goes to referendum, let me rephrase that, if it goes to referendum and it passes, when would we implement, if we went through the four-phase or the full dollar amount?
So if it passed in November, I mean, we'd move as quick as we could. I'm sure there'll be, you know, engineering plans, different things that would, you know, there'd be an amount of time just doing plans, actual, you know, documents for a while.
So technically, this doesn't include the plans yet?
No, it would include everything.
It would include everything.
I believe so.
Not the material, because that could change at any point in time?
It's the best guess as of today.
As of today. So this could change by November. So we are approving a 56 million plus to put for referendum, 56 million if we put the whole thing forward. That could change by the time we get to November, and it'd be a whole different number. So can we hold off to make sure that as we get close to November, that, September, that we know what we're going to put out to the public? I don't want to put out this number and then come find out, we got 10 more million dollars to be added to it. We don't know. As of today, this is fine. By November, it could be a whole different number. I want us to take our time with this, and yes, this has been delayed, but we have delayed everything. It's not just this, it's the community center that we've been trying to do for years, since I've been on, since 2013, actually. We've been trying to do different things for years. Money is tight, and there are some families who cannot do it. Money is tight, and there are some families who cannot do it. And I get where everybody's coming from about, go ahead, put it forward. There are some families who cannot do that. And I'm still a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say these numbers are probably wrong, as of now, because they were probably put together six months ago. I'm just gonna, my feelings on sending it out to referendum for the public is one of the reasons I feel I was elected is to look at the big picture of the entire town. And putting out this single item, most residents aren't aware of all the things that we need to do. They're not watching our potential losing federal money for schools. They're not looking at the federal money we need to build a bridge, not looking at impact aid, all the different things. They're not aware of those numbers. So they just see football fields, football fields.
Point of order.
And.
You're.
This is just my feeling on this.
I would be careful speaking about the public not being aware of what's going on, is all.
He is allowed to talk about the public.
This is my.
Not allowed to talk about you, but is allowed to talk about the public.
So I feel as being elected to be here, I'm supposed to be in charge of all that. I'm supposed to look at all those things and be aware of it and bring that knowledge into my decisions. And most of the people that I've talked to aren't aware, which I have learned from just campaigning or talking to people or doing things, aren't aware of all the different things that go on into a town. So it isn't just this, it's a whole lot of things. And so I'm not sure that it would be an informed view. They just want fields, fields, fields. And so I'm just very reluctant at this time, looking at what's going on in our, at our federal level, which is greatly gonna affect our state level in terms of the money we're gonna get and the things we're gonna be able to do. And so I feel that we can keep moving forward, get the engineering, try to get the more accurate numbers. But, you know, trying to put something on referendum in November, when all of this is sort of coming to a peak, the budget's gonna be redone, the federal budget is at September unless they move it forward again. So we're gonna know a whole lot more in September than we do right now. And so I'm, I'm just very reluctant to, to move anything forward and try to put a commitment, especially anything as large as 56 million, which I agree with Councilor Parker, by the time we get there with tariffs and inflation, it could be 66 million or more. So that's just how I feel. I know it's, I'm sorry about that, but that's sort of where I am. I also, and I mentioned the last, I think it was last week or the last time we talked about this, I'm sure that the Fields Committee looked at working with the school systems, but I would like to relook at that. They have all these fields. I drove by the middle school today. The Quantic Plains was filled with kids. The, the middle school had just a couple of kids on it. And I think we should relook at those fields and how we can integrate and get better use of them for all, all of our students. People have been able to work out good combinations between different teams on the fields that they have access to. Why can't we do that with the school system? And they're just sitting vacant. They were sitting vacant tonight. Why can't we, why can't we use it? So. But we have a lot of fields that we could, with careful integration, we should have more, get better use, and that might sort of relieve some of the pressure. So I think that should, I'd like to put that back out there. But that's just my view, so. Okay. Hold on.
Just to clarify, there is a game going on at the middle field right now.
But there's an empty field next to it. Land, kids on that field.
It's not a field, a playing field.
So.
Mayor. Councilor Merritt, you've already spoken twice.
Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
Just wanted to, I'm not giving an opinion on which way to go, but I just wanted to add a little bit more to that question about what if it came in over budget. You'd, of course, also be looking at value engineering, what could be cut out, and then you could always also choose, okay, we can't afford this this time, but we can get this much of it done, and then, and then go back out for the others. So there are some options there. And I'd also like to mention that Athletic Field Task Force did start discussions of field sharing, and there is a feeling that it could be improved, but it's beginning discussions.
Point of information.
Your question.
I'm in favor of, if, if we can vote, the council, I'm asking a question. Can I please have a minute? I'm getting there. Before you interrupt, let me finish it. What I'm asking is, I'm willing to put, if it's proper now, to ask for a vote, so Councilor Merritt can speak for a third time. I know we have it in our rules where we can ask to speak for a third time. I, I would be in favor of that, if that's possible, Mayor.
That's important information. I'm not hearing anybody supporting that.
She missed, I'll second that, that's what she was looking for.
Thank you.
That was no point, is that?
Are you putting a motion on the floor? Are you doing a point of information?
So I, point of information to ask for your guidance as the mayor. Is it appropriate, he asked to raise his hand again, and this is a hot topic, and I just was asking, could we put a motion on the floor for a third time? So if that's.
You can request a motion, yes.
Thank you. So I will put a motion on the floor to ask so that councillors may have a third speaking time if they so choose.
McBride will second that.
Okay.
Roll call vote, then?
Roll call vote. Councilor Borland.
Yes.
Councilor Gajaski.
Yes.
Councilor Jones.
Yes.
Councilor McBride.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Merritt.
Yes.
Councilor Parker.
No.
Councilor Pacina.
Yes.
Councilor Rusk.
Yes.
I am also a yes. All right, that passes eight to one to zero.
Thank you.
With Parker opposed. Okay. Is there anybody that would still like to speak for their second time?
Or their first time.
Or their first time. All right, I'm gonna speak for my second time. I wrote some notes here, so, um, so I want to respond by just saying, what's happening right now in the markets, in the world, could actually change in four months. It's changed this quick, it could change differently. I'm trying to be optimistic. So I still think you just keep working forward, and then come September or so, the, what Mr. Burt had said, that's September, you're gonna know really where you stand better, and that's when you make a better decision then. But you still keep moving forward. The numbers will always change from one six-month period to another. It's usually how it works. And I will say, Groton has voted on athletic fields before. They voted on them at the Merritt property over here. They were gonna build athletic fields into the whole hill, and it failed. It was very expensive, and it failed. I think they were asking for too much. In my own perspective, it was too big of an ask for them in the community. So if you break it out, they might be okay with a smaller number, and thinking that we're doing this in a very responsible way. And then if things are really bad in the future, we maybe wait a year and then start the phase two, and then we'll see how things go. But my thought is, I am with you, one of my councillors who are like, we're so close, let's just keep going, try and do something, and come September, we make the final decision if we can. I'm also in favor of what Mr. Burt was saying. Let's ask Athletic Fields Task Force, or whoever created this. And also, I have one other question, because when you look at the map that's on page, what page is this? I think it's page 46, and you look behind the tennis courts, there's two buildings right there with something in the middle. I thought those were public restrooms. For some reason, I thought those were gonna be the public restrooms, so I thought this was part of it. Also, what I've heard from people that have said in further discussions, we, we are in compliance with, you know, issues with, you know, the field house. I mean, people are talking about the field house and saying it's not in compliance with, what is it, Title IX, the girls and the boys. We have a school. We have, we have locker rooms up there. We have all the things that we're supposed to have. And many, many places don't even have a field house, is what I'm being told. So I understand some people think that's a big priority. I get it. I wouldn't mind fixing it. I just think in the first phase, the whole thing was created about athletic fields, because we have a lack of them, and we need them so desperately. And I will say, they have gone through all the fields. They have done huge data inputs of who's using these fields, and I'm telling you, it's not as easy as saying, try and work together and figure out what to use these fields for. It's not that easy. That's my turn. Councilor Merritt.
Well, I'd like to put a little bit of history forward on this, the fact that Fitch was built somewhere between 1954 and the early 60s, and the initial cost was $16,700 for the property. And that football field, which hasn't been touched since then, was an initial, for that time period, an initial feat of engineering. It's called terracing. And they pulled the bottom of the hill up and created the football field. And like I said, it hasn't been touched since the 60s. And I really think we need to move forward on that, and whatever else is included. And the prices have changed, and they will change again. That's life.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through the mayor to town manager. If we were to put the 56.5 million on a referendum, and it passed, would we then bond as we go along?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like we did the schools. It's just, yeah, the only risk is that prices increase a little further to get out.
Now, that's, that was my, my follow-up question, because the voters would have agreed and voted on 56.5 million, not 70 million, because it'll probably go up to that over the next four years. So what happens when you hit that 56.5 million and $1?
As you're bidding, you make decisions, like I laid out earlier. Value engineering, see what you can get it down to, see what projects could be delayed for another referendum vote. You know, you look for other funding sources. Every option you would have is any other project you ran out of money on.
Okay. I, I haven't heard any argument yet that changes my mind in the original four-year plan and putting out for referendum every, every year, because we'll have better numbers each year. They will be more expensive, we know that, but we'll have more accurate numbers every year. I'm, I'm still on board with that. I'm yielding my time.
Thank you. All right, so let's just try and figure out how we want to go forward, the direction we want to give the town manager. This is not a vote. It's not binding in the place like we're passing something. We're giving direction on what we should be doing to, to the town manager. So I'm hearing, basically, what I have heard from councillors, and when it comes your turn, you can say it's different, three options. Do it all, 56 million, bond it now, go forward that way. There's also the phase in, the four-phase approach. And then there's also nothing. Do nothing and at this time. So I'm gonna sort of go through, and we're gonna see what everybody thinks. I'm gonna write your name. We'll come up with a consensus of who has, where the majority of people stand, and then we'll go to the next item on potentially, if they choose, if they choose nothing, the answer's nothing. We don't have to go any farther. But if they choose a different, one of the other options, then you talk about if it's 10, 15, 20, all these other options will come into play at that time. So I'm going to start on this side of the table this tonight. Councilor Parker.
I already said no.
You are nothing. Councilor Gajaski.
Phased in.
Councilor McBride.
Phased in over 20 years, the total cost is.
Well, we're just doing, we're doing either 56 million, all of it, or we're doing a phase in.
Well, I'm trying to provide my rationale for my reason.
We're just trying.
Can I provide my rationale?
No.
I've never had a second or third term.
Well, if we're going back to that, you should have raised your hand.
Well, I didn't know you were, I didn't know we were concluding.
Fine, we can, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead, we're gonna, you can take your turn. Go ahead.
I'll make it very quick. And the reason for 56 million is, over 20 years is 83 million. Over 20 years, that's 4.162 million per year. 40,000 residents, that's $104, $104 per resident. So I'm all for the phase-in approach. If the council wants, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm all for the all-in approach. If the council wants to do the phase-in approach, I'm in support of that, but I'm definitely not in support of nothing.
So do you want me to write your name next to the 56 and the phase in? Are you?
56 for now. Thank you.
Councilor Jones.
Can I have a round three question? So my, my question through the mayor to the town manager is, if we, if I said, or anybody said, keep working on the project.
You do.
What would that mean? What would you do if I said, don't commit to anything but you're working? Is there more engineering? Are you talking to Chad? Are you, what would that?
Well, it depends on, on the, I would, you know, if it's the phase in, obviously, we have to send it to get more input. If it's all in, then, then it's easier, obviously. You know, then we don't have to go back out to, you know, to the experts at this point. We can move right in with scheduling things.
Okay.
Though you would have to decide on the number of years of issuance, though.
And then a question to the mayor. The phased-in approach, the 1, 2, 3, 4, means a referendum this year, referendum the following year, referendum.
Doesn't have to be.
It could be, so it could either be like a $56 million phase in, or it could be.
No, it would be like approximately, like on page 70, approximately 14 million, 13, 15, 12. And let's just say we each referendum, and let's just say the first year goes out.
One year, year one.
And then let's just say next year is a bad year. It's not a good time to go forward. Maybe we skip a year, and then this phase two would be done when it was the right time to do it.
Okay.
It, it doesn't have to be done in four years. There are phases. It could be done if things are going good.
It could be six years. It could be one, three, four, seven, something like that. Okay. I have nothing.
Councilor Rusk.
Phased in.
Councilor Pacina.
Phased in.
Councilor Borland.
I'll take my turn.
Go ahead.
I think, you know, I know someone approached me about the phased-in approach, and they're like, oh, if we pick, if that, if the council picks that, that means it's guaranteed, right? It's gonna follow that. I think we just need to be very clear when we say phased in, because to the public, then, they need to hear, if that option is the one that is to pass tonight, that it's phase one, depending on what we move around. Right now, it doesn't have any bathrooms, and nothing's guaranteed year to year. So I just want to be very clear that people aren't getting sold the wrong information, that, as it was stated, phase one could start, and then we might not start phase two for five more years. And then phase three could start another five years. Phase four could start another five years then, and then phase one would probably next to repairs by then. You know, I think that needs to be cleared. So it's not guaranteed phasing versus possible phasing it, because we're not owning, we're saying if the numbers don't look good, we're gonna hold, is what has been said tonight. So I just want that to be clear to the public, what this is, and that it's not, because it's different to say, yep, we're gonna go with all four options. We're gonna go with a phase-in approach, and it's a guaranteed phase-in approach, meaning every year, each item will happen. What's been said is, one may start, and if we don't have it, it could be held, and we're not sure how long. Now we're gonna have a very jumbled-up complex that could be sitting half, half this, half that, none of that. That's my concern with that approach. I'm for the 56, because as Council McBride so eloquently stated, I say put it, like, and I think the mayor stated, that if the taxpayers don't want it, they'll vote it down. Put it in a referendum. They have voted things down in the past. Takes the pressure off my back. I did my job. I gave them what they wanted and allowed them to vote. I disagree. I, I feel that the people are informed in the community, and I feel that they do know what's going on in the world and what's going on with the budget, and, you know, folks I'm speaking to. And I feel if enough education's out there, this makes sense. It saves money over time, the 20-year process, which Council McBride also stated, it puts us, it says, let's move it, let's go. I am concerned. If this ends up staying the phase, a football curb, parking drive, and a stadium, and that's it, no bathrooms, no nothing. Other schools have better locker rooms than I do. As a person who played sports and ran track, I had to come all the way from the main building down. We had nowhere to store anything, and people who have ABA compliance, that's a far distance. So we are not. Our locker rooms still have the, the boot camp round, where everyone stands. The showers are not even individually stalled. So let's just be clear when we talk about the structure up at Fitch. the structure up at Fitch High School, it is outdated, and there's not a locker for each athlete. So to rotate season to season. Thank you. So I'm for fifty-six, because I'm tired of waiting. I say put it to the voters, let's move.
Counselor Merritt.
I'm going to move forward for the fifty-six, and how that is divvied up in the course of time is probably what the referendum will determine, and what we feel we can afford. If I'm correct in understanding, it'll add about a hundred dollars to taxes per person. Mr. Burrit.
For fifty-six million, you have to give me a couple minutes, I'll turn this.
That's probably one of the bottom lines of the whole discussion.
Just a point of clarification, I divided the total cost by forty thousand residents and came up with a hundred and four dollars per resident.
Per resident?
Per resident.
That includes children.
Right.
Probably do it by eighteen thousand, number of homes.
It's eighteen thousand homes.
I don't see where we can cut it any closer, though.
So that's two, twenty-five or so.
What?
If you did the eighty-three thousand by eighteen thousand, it's like two hundred and twenty, it's in the world.
Point of information, does that, Madam Mayor?
Your question.
So if the taxes are one oh four per person, and there's a four or five, or six, there's some people who have six kids in the home, that's per student, per child, on top of that, on top of, is that, I'm trying to understand the rationale of the dollar amount. Is that per person, or is that something else? Or is that the total household period?
Maybe we should let Mr. Burrit come up with some figures here.
And are you looking at the cost increase for the first full year?
I intended the cost per taxpayer.
Life of it, the forty, the...
I used the eighty-three, the entire cost, divided by twenty years.
Eighty-three million total cost.
Divided by eighteen thousand.
I mean, you know, if I were to look at something, we probably want to look at the mill rate for, you know, impact each year. For instance, looking back at that early round of numbers from two weeks ago, the first full-year impact would be the high, you know, one point eight million, dropping down to seven hundred thousand the next year. So it would depend on where you're looking, but if you're looking at year one, it'd be...
So year one could add one point eight million to the budget.
Right.
If you did all fifty-six million at one time, instead of phasing it in as needed.
Point of clarification, I was saying to do the referendum of fifty-six million, not to go out to bond the total fifty-six million, to get the full approval, but then still to do the phased-in approach on bonding. I'd never mean to do fifty-six million in total bonding, just to get the approval of the bonding, and then do the phased-in approach for financing.
You'll for sure need to do follow-up ones on that, you're not going to accurately guess the number then. You've wanted at least, fifty-six million's not going to be it for a phased-in approach, you're going to have to try to build in some more money, so we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, you could add in an I percent factor.
Yeah, for a year.
Point of information.
Your question.
So would it still be a phased-in approach?
Phased-in, phased-in financing approach, but not a phased-in approval.
Still be a phased-in approach. I mean, if we can't finance it, we can't finance it. We have to, we would have to go to referendum for extra money, because we didn't ask them for that.
And just, that flag for the one point eight million is about a point three eight million increase for that.
Three point...
Point three eight, for that one point eight million increase, for that one year.
Point of information.
Your question.
I too was, just to clarify, wanting the fifty-six guaranteed, like the voter's saying they want that, and obviously you can't build it all at once, so it would be phased in. But I want the guaranteed on the bill that we're going to do it, from the referendum, that's what I'm asking. Basically like Counselor McBride.
Counselor Merritt, where are you standing? Are you looking for the phased-in approach and do, like on page seventy, with potential that, or are you looking to get the full approval at fifty-six million?
Well, I think that the phased-in approach could probably be a good start. Could be a possibility, that could change down the road, but at least it's a start better than what we have for the past several years.
Mayor, I just want to make sure everyone understands one thing, you know, as we know that these bond scenarios are best guessed, once you actually go out for the bond issuance, you'll have a few bidders, and each one will look totally different on where they put those numbers, where they front-load, back-load, everything else. So, you know, we get too bound up on one individual a year.
Okay. All right. I am also, as I've stated, the four-year phased-in approach, which, what I'm saying is, basically come up with a year one, and that's what we go out with, and, all right, so I, you sure can.
So I just want to say, I completely understand the approach of doing it all at once. I can respect that, and we want to get the money, and we want to make sure all of this happens. And I think many of us have stated repeatedly that we want this to happen, we want these fields to happen. I don't want to waste time, and, in my opinion, and go to, try to reach for the stars and not get them. I'm afraid that if we go for fifty-six million, or sixty million, or whatever we feel like is the right approach, or the right number for the whole thing, my fear is that the taxpayers aren't going to say no, which puts us another year behind, and then we try the phased-in approach. I want to make this happen, so I feel like the four phases is how that's going to happen, and I could be wrong, and I will accept that. So again, I understand why people want to say, yes, I want this all at once, and then, you know, obviously we have to do the work over years anyways. I'm just afraid people are going to say, there's no way we can afford that. I remember all the work that happened to try to get the schools passed, it was a huge push from the community, and we're still paying those off. One, I don't want to go to people and say we need sixty million dollars and have them say no, but also I don't want to say we need sixty million dollars, and then in three years realize we are out of money and we are not done, and then we're going back to them saying, hmm, we need more, which I think feels very disingenuous to people, versus if we can do it every four year, or for four different years, I feel like we can adjust as we go and make sure that we're giving accurate numbers, and then people can make those choices. So again, I want this done. I agree that we need new fields. The football stadium in a whole is deplorable, but it is really up to the taxpayers and how much they feel is an appropriate number to push for a referendum. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, have I spoken for a third time?
No, you have not. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand the approach, and I understand everybody's concerns. My question would be, construction, they do in pieces anyways, correct? They're not going to, they'll have to close the field down and close everything off, so they would be doing it in sections anyways. I'm still a no, but I just want to throw that out there. They're piecemealing it, they would have to in building everything, unless you tear everything down and rebuild fresh, and that's probably not going to happen. So each piece is going to be done individually anyways. I still, I'm a no to everything right now, but I still want to look at what's going to happen. I don't want to wait until September. That's my, why I'm saying no now. I want to know what's going to happen, I want the actual numbers that's really going to happen, and we still need to talk to Mr. Frost and them to make sure we have firm numbers and how we can piece it correctly. So no, September, and it's going to be piecemealed anyways. Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to wait till the next agenda topic, but I'm going to foreshadow a little bit. I think if your best bet of getting any support for this is piecemealing it, because in the next agenda item, which is the Community Investment Fund, sometimes you don't get it, you have to reapply, and reapply, and if you piecemeal it, you can keep applying different parts of the project. So that's why I'm for the phased-in approach. I was going to wait till the next agenda topic, but I thought that would be good to do it now. So that's where I'm at, and why I phased-in approach, and so, yield back.
Okay, now, I think the phased-in approach is basically for Mr. Burrit to go back and work with them to figure out the phases, what's appropriate phases of how to do what they need for, what they think the money is per phase, but you sort of get a gist of it money-wise. And then it's basically, would you be looking, as a council, at ten, fifteen, or twenty years? Would you want to finance phase one at ten, fifteen, or twenty years type of thing?
Point of information?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, so the direction that you gave to the town manager is the phased-in approach, but not guaranteed to happen every year?
Right.
Okay. So the fifty-six is not going, or whatever that final number is.
Right, fifty-six got two supporters.
No, I'm just clarifying, just to make sure. So it would be, each item would go forward, but it's not guaranteed to go forward?
It's its own referendum.
It'll be own referendum item each year.
Yes, yes. Okay. So now it would be sort of the direction of, do you want to look at ten, fifteen, or twenty-year phased-in financing? Counselor Merritt, what do you think? Ten, fifteen, or twenty?
I think ten-year financing is going to be a little bit high on one end for the cost, and then the interest would be low.
Right.
But do we have that amount of money, or can we go, say, fifteen, right in the middle?
So page fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four basically has a layout and would show, yeah, no, I'm sorry, fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, yes, would show basically how the debt service would increase, all the way on the far right corner, I mean, column, if we just took this as a general dollar amount to look at.
No. I don't know, I'm not very much in line with this, but I would say in the middle, fifteen years.
All right, fifteen.
How does that feel?
Counselor Bordeland.
Twenty.
Counselor Pacina.
Fifteen.
Counselor Rusk.
Twenty.
Counselor Jones.
Ten.
Rip the band-aid off.
Counselor McBride.
I'll say twenty, but can I elaborate a little bit?
Let me see how many times you've talked.
Only two.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. And the reason I say that is because if we put this to ten, if you look at those numbers of ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, it's more likely not to pass, because those numbers are substantial. I also think the twenty-year matching, the people going to utilize the benefit. And there was one other item. What was it? Oh, the other item is, I think it's difficult, because now that we're doing a phased-in approach, when you say to pick ten, fifteen, twenty, we're talking just for this phase one, right? Because if you go to, if you go to phased-in approach, phase two, three, and four...
We'll probably follow the same.
Or what you're likely to do, you could do fifteen or twenty on the other ones. So when you present it to the residents, whether it's ten, fifteen, or twenty, it's, a resident may say, well, you can change two, three, and four, because that's not being referendum. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. What we're saying in year one is what we'll move forward with the referendum, but that's not going to change the three other bond years, because those are subsequent to what you want to do at that time. And anyway, I'd like twenty.
You're saying twenty?
Twenty, yes.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, I'm taking my time, too. I'm going to say fifteen, and the reason I'm going to say fifteen is if you look at the fifteen-year and twenty-year, the initial difference of the first fiscal year, on the smaller project is two thousand dollars, and a bigger project is four thousand dollars more expensive for a fifteen-year, and you can pay it off a little bit quicker. So that's why I'm going to go with fifteen.
Counselor Parker.
Point of information.
Yes, your question.
Using my homeowner brain, can we pay this off early, if we have the ability?
Some bonds you can, you usually have to pay for a certain amount of time, but then there tends to be a window, you can, if interest rates, you know, you have a set schedule, you're paying. The only option would be if you refinanced it at some point, but, you know, at a lower rate, so, not really, because once you sell a bond, you're telling them this is what you're getting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got to think that through for a second.
Commander Burrit, question.
You have a point of information?
Point of information.
Yes.
The school buildings, are those financed for twenty years?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, yeah.
I'd vote for two, it is a lot of them. Thank you.
All right, so I did the calculations here, without my vote, it's, the twenty has three, fifteen has four, ten has one, so I'm just going to go with a fifteen, and that equals five of us. So, Mr. Burrit, it's on fifteen right now. So would you please try and come up with a phase four in approach with a fifteen-year, and ask, you know, whoever needs to help us with the numbers, give the numbers tightened up closer to what they think actuality would be.
Point of information.
Your question.
And that fifteen-year is, we're just talking about phase one, because it could change for phase two, three, and four.
It could.
Okay.
Point of information.
Your question.
Is it possible to make sure that when this writes up, and how we present it, that it is presented that it's phased in, but each year is not guaranteed?
What do you mean, write it up that way?
So if people are asking...
I don't think a referendum's going to go out that way.
I'm not saying a referendum. People ask, so there's not, the confusion, that if year two comes, and as you guys said, there could be trouble with money, people need to understand that this was not voted in as a full-phase guaranteed phases going forward, that it's, it needs to be worded that it's going to be referendum each year, so it's not guaranteed that the second phase would happen.
Where do you want, where do you want that written up?
Well, I don't know, I mean, they might write a report on it, I mean, this is a big item, right? If the newspaper, you know, how we're presenting it needs to be presented, I just want to make sure we present it accurately, that's all. If it goes on our website, that each year will be a referendum, so it's not guaranteed, it's going to be up to the voters each year.
I can pretty much guarantee the day will reach out to me, and...
Yeah.
And they will have already watched the speaking. They'll know, and they'll ask me to confirm, yes.
Right. So it's not guaranteed, I just want people to know that there's a referendum each and every year.
All right, so I'm just going to make a note here, direction for phase approach, fifteen-year financing, and have the phases financially accurate. Okay. All righty, that was actually good work. I know it's not easy to do like a workshop like that, but it was good work from everybody. So moving on to two zero two five dash four one seven, Community Investment Fund application. This is on page eighty-one of our packet. No motion made in advance of this item.
Good evening.
Okay, thanks, everybody. So again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Krim Piazza, Community and Economic Development Manager, thank you.
So I know the council has talked a little bit about, heard a little bit about the Community Investment Fund, so we want to talk to you a little bit about that tonight, and some potential applications, both in this round and in some future rounds. Before we get into kind of the specifics, we do want to talk a little bit about the parameters, kind of what the state is looking for, for some of these competitive projects, some of our proposed applications, and kind of that timeline. After tonight, next steps, if the council moves forward, is we would be applying for some of these, working in conjunction with Parks and Rec. some of these, working in conjunction with Parks and Rec. I also want to state that after we prepared the initial referral to you, we, at the staff level, had a conversation with some folks from the ECD, specifically the folks that manage the Community Investment Fund application. They gave us some direction, which kind of changed a little bit of our timeline, and some of the applications we're thinking of moving forward with now versus later. And then we also had a conversation with the City of Groton about a possible joint partnership on a request for them, so we just kind of want to put that on everybody's radar. Next slide. So really, the CIF looks at transformative economic development projects, so not just, you know, a typical grant for something that we might normally go after, but really, they're focusing on what's gonna transform or help transform an area. There's really two priorities of funding, planning sides, and then capital projects. We are one of 54 municipalities that are eligible, so not all of the 169 municipalities in Connecticut are eligible. We, the town, are the only eligible entity to apply for Groton, not our political subdivisions, and we have not previously, as the town, received a CIF grant. Quite a bit of funds go out every year from the state, and there are, we can request multiple applications, but the state's really looking for key considerations as we apply for each of these. Excellent. And the state really encouraged us, kind of, on each round, to apply for up to two, for us, as we set those priorities, to work with our state reps, so that they can help advocate at the state level on our behalf. And again, the timing of those projects are really critical. One of the other interesting parts that the folks at the CIF program had brought up with us was, they want to make sure all of our, all of our other funding is in place before we go ask them for money. So thinking about, you know, bonds and recreation fields, they want us to have our money in place. If we're doing joint partnerships with developers, to have that funding in place. If we're looking for things that would also be eligible for other state grants, like brownfields funding, for us to have all of those things in place before we come ask them for CIF funding. Next slide. So with that in mind, there are kind of four projects we're thinking on a bigger scheme, but a little bit of a varying timeline on each of these. The first one, we had a good discussion with the state about, was that Route 117 infrastructure improvements. This was something that came up in our capital improvement projects. The council has approved, hasn't been approved by the RTM yet, $175,000 to begin the design and engineering of a sewer line up Route 117, continuing basically from Heagan Drive up to 184, searing that area, again, still design, engineering. For us to ask the state for another $250,000 towards that design, engineering permitting, and also doing some community outreach and engagement, the state is really stressing that any of these projects that they're looking at, from a design perspective, and then future implementation, they want to make sure that not only are your elected leaders engaged and involved on this, but that the community is in support of it, because they want to make sure these projects actually happen. So that's something that they encouraged us to go for one of these planning grants, which have a maximum of $250,000 for them. And then, once we do that kind of outreach, engagement, design permitting, we could go back to them, and they thought the actual infrastructure of this would be a great, kind of, round-nine capital improvement project, somewhere probably in the range of $5 to $7 million, based on cost estimates from the design. Next slide. The next one, working with the City of Groton, Shore Avenue Seawall Improvements, this is somewhere ballpark, about $9.8 million. The city has been working on this project. Initial estimates were a much lower number. They've hit ledge, they've hit some other things through the, that project, and this is something that the CIF said, you know, we are looking at infrastructure projects like this, and this is something that would certainly be eligible. Again, we can apply for up to $10 million. I don't know what the realistic number of what the state would give us for this, but it's something we certainly can ask for a maximum amount, they could always give us less for that. Next slide. And those are kind of the two that we're encouraging moving forward with now, during kind of this Round Seven. Round Eight, kind of our third project, originally, we were thinking this was something we were gonna move forward with in Round Seven, but the feedback that we received from the state was, go after some brownfields money for the first big piece, looking at both Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley for environmental remediation and cleanup, and then some of the demolition that could potentially happen at the Pleasant Valley School. These are some, you know, rough estimates that we've come up with, based on kind of pending numbers that are out there. But again, and a big need for this would be helping to reduce the need for town to provide any financial assistance for developers in the future with some of the things that we're asking for. Again, Round Eight type of project. Next slide. And then, number four, something else we'd be looking at in that Round Eight, once we have some bond funding in place, talking and applying for money to help offset some of the athletic fields task force discussion that you were just having. Again, something, whether it's helping to move an X phase forward, but the state really said, your best chance for getting money for this would be if you, the town, have bond funding in place, if we applied for it now, which we certainly could, they wouldn't approve of it and release the funding until the bond was approved anyway, and it would be a much more competitive application if we already had the bond funding in place. Next slide. So again, just, this is our general proposal right now, happy to, you know, discuss with the council a little bit. Round Seven, which the application period, pretty short application period, and intensive application, really, we'd get a little over a month to kind of put things together, looking at that 117 project and the capital improvement in the city. Round Eight, which would be sometime October, November of this year, looking at the project, possibly for Groton Heights, Pleasant Valley, and then also, depending on the timing of that, where that is with the election, if we move forward with the bond, we could also be looking for some of that athletic task force funding. And then Round Nine, spring of 2026, looking at possibly that capital improvement for the Route 117 infrastructure project. So those are probably the best projects, the best chance we have of getting some of this money from the state. I think that the overall plan for the state is to have 10 rounds, we haven't quite thought out that far yet, but these are not your typical grants, they require a lot of documentation, a lot of linkages between the economic growth and what's gonna happen, so it's, it's something that takes a lot of time and effort. Happy to open up the floor, if you want to leave that slide up, I think that was kind of really the...
Before we open it up, what is, what is the direction you're looking for?
So we're looking for the council to support us moving forward in Round Seven with an application for the Route 117 infrastructure improvement projects, and the city seawall at Shore Avenue project. And I know, you know, we're getting a little late tonight, and we got other items on the agenda. If we move forward with those now, that's something that we can start that application process with, working with the city. The city would really be doing much of the application, but the city seawall one, we would facilitate making sure that application was turned in with ours, and working with our Public Works Department on that Route 117 application, and our economic development staff. So if the council were behind those two, Round Eight, Round Nine, we can kind of figure those out later, but we wanted to give you the thought process of where we are, and what we thought our best chances were moving forward.
Okay, so you're looking for direction on Round Seven, because that's immediately in front of us at the moment.
Yes.
Okay.
Point of information?
Your question?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize numbers had changed from what was on here to our, from our packet to what was on here.
Yes.
So can I just confirm, the Route 117 was $250,000?
Correct.
The seawall was $9 million?
9.8 million.
9.8, my apologies.
Oh, no.
Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley, $5 million?
Approximately.
Okay, and then the athletics field was $5 million?
Correct. Anywhere from $5 to $10 million. We can ask for up to 10, but there's always a little bit of strategy here, we don't want to be too greedy, but we want to make sure we're asking for enough.
Thank you. All right. Council McBride?
Thank you. I, I support those two, based upon your recommendations. The only comment I would like to make is, you, you had said that they want to know if you have bond funding in place, so this would have been ideal to know before the council just voted on splitting up the phased approach for the athletic field task force, because if we go the phased approach, we're not gonna have that in fully referendum-approved, correct?
You would have some of the referendum-approved, so if you went with Phase One of that project, we could ask for an additional $5 million, which could then pay for starting the next phase, or whatever that number is, if it's five, if it's seven, if it's 10. We would just need to show a linkage, and how, again, we then would then have to tie it to, how will that section that we're taking, asking for money from the state, how is that having a real transforma-, transformational economic impact? Now, we do have a study from a number of years ago that talks a little bit about that, but again, that's kind of Round Eight stuff.
Okay, I just think, to summarize, I would think asking for 10 of 58 would have been more appropriate than asking for five for 14. And I can't speak for the people that are up there, but it would be a more significant number if we did fully bond the 58, or fully get the referendum approval on 58, to ask for the 10. That's all, I just want to, it's just a point for consideration for this council to consider as we move forward, that's all. Thank you.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what, what you're saying is, if a project is currently funded to some degree, then you have a much better shot of getting additional funding?
Yes.
And if there's no funding, then you don't. So I, I didn't realize we had funding, by just reading through the packet on the Route 117, did we approve the $175,000 in the FY '26 budget?
So the council has, that hasn't gone before the RTM yet. With these planning funds, that helps our application a lot, but it's not as critical that we have money to bring into that, but does that make our application much more competitive? It certainly does.
It shows a commitment by the town, that we move forward, and whether it's, so we have, sometimes money can be used for planning, other times money can be used for doing actual work.
Correct.
That's right, and so, we're showing that we've committed, even though it hasn't been finally approved yet, but we've shown commitment, so that one's all set.
Yeah, and by the time, sorry to interrupt, by the time this application is made, we'll know if that money was approved or not.
Okay. And then, on the seawall, we're already doing, work is already going on, so there's commitment of funds in that project, and so we're just looking for really additional funds, so...
Yeah.
Both of those fit into the requirements that you're sort of, you're saying.
Exactly. I think the town and city have already spent over $4 million or so on that project.
And just on, like, athletic fields, you're not looking at that until 2026, or later anyways, so...
Round Eight.
Or the late 2025, so right after kind of that, where the bond would be.
Where the bond would be, okay. Got it, okay, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you want to have money committed to a project to say it's a viable project, and then they say, okay, you guys are good.
Exactly.
You can, they'll either do it or not do it, but you're much better than just sort of in-the-sky kind of project.
Because these are, I, I don't know if I stressed this enough, these are highly competitive projects, every round, they've received substantially more requests than what they've given out. I think a number of the rounds, they've received close to $1 billion in requests, and they're giving out, you know, less than $100 million per round. So there's a lot of ask and a lot of commitment, so we would need to come forward with the most competitive applications that we can, because again, the state's purpose on this transformational economic development, and they want to see this multiplier effect.
Have, have we ever received these funds on any project?
No.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Council Boarderlin?
How much should we, what do we request for the seawall?
Sorry, say that again?
What's the amount that we're requesting for the seawall?
Approximately $9.8 million.
Okay. So first, with no disrespect, I know everything's ever-changing, you know, nothing, like, like, it wasn't in our packet tonight, so it didn't even, like, it's not something I had time to process, and as you know, we have time limits up here, three minutes, it's a lot to process, it's, it's nice to be able to do a little bit more research and see. So my first question is, so this is the city's doing it, and we're helping them, because I don't have the staffing, that's my first question.
So again, as I stressed before, the municipality is the only eligible entity to apply for this, so Groton Long Point cannot apply for this, Noin can apply, not apply for this, the city cannot apply for this, because they are not the recognized municipality of the 169 municipalities in Connecticut, so we have to technically apply for it on behalf of the city. The city will write the grant application, I'm sorry.
No, I went like, okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so...
Just, we don't have this in our packet, so this is all new at this minute.
Yep.
Just to be clear, like, it's a lot to process.
And a lot of this is coming up as we're trying to respond to moving forward with these types of applications, and do the best that we can, because some of these changes happen kind of quick.
Yeah. I, I guess, I mean, I've heard it from a lot of different people, I mean, we haven't really been updated on the seawall fully as a council, like, no one's come from, before us, from the city. So for me to approve monies on something that were a joint municipality, it would be helpful for some formal presentation to kind of see what's been, what's really been going on, what's going, I, I, I'm reading stuff, but I don't have. And with that, I feel like there's been other pressing projects on the town side, you know, we're cutting here, you know, this, and we have these athletic fields that we're trying to, in my opinion, phase in, but not guaranteed, and then we're gonna go for a 9.8 for seawall that I haven't had an update, and it's just on a thing tonight. Like, I feel like the athletic fields has been something that's been sitting for quite some time on the side, and I just feel like that, to me, and I speak for myself, is a priority. The seawall debacle, as I will call it, in my own opinion...
Point of order.
Your point of order?
That's judgmental, and that's inappropriate.
It is. Thank you. So if I could finish my...
No.
Please don't interrupt me.
Madam Mayor?
Your question, your point of order?
I find it disrespectful that Council Boarderlin is putting judgment in this, on, by saying debacle.
Thank you, I concur, thank you.
So I'll just clear that the word debacle I was using is, it was unclear, they dug in, it hit something, so it turned into, we have debacles in our own house, you start to rip down a wall, and you have a debacle, because you find lead, or you find asbestos. It wasn't in my intent, was never in the framing in which the person is taking it. So the way I'm saying it is, we hit a rough patch. Is that a better word? Still, to me, I use the word debacle. If that's offensive to you, I wish no disrespect...
Council Boarderlin, keep it at the, you don't get to speak back to another council.
I need to defend what I'm being wrongly represented.
You don't need to defend.
I need to defend what I'm being wrongly represented.
You were pointed-ordered, you were found to be out of order.
I'm not out of order, though.
Asked you to keep, not say the word debacle, and then you went on a tirade over basically defending yourself.
Because I always have to.
Over the whole thing.
But I shouldn't have to.
If you do not like the judge, the verdict, the decision, then you can...
Appeal the ruling of the chair.
Appeal the ruling of the chair, that's correct.
And, okay, I'll, I'll override the, I'll, I'll ask for an overruling of the, appeal of the chair, then. Let's see where that goes, because that's not my intent of debacle, it wasn't in the intent. So would I get to speak to it now?
I don't hear a second.
Yeah, so...
So no.
That's why I don't ask, because I don't get it. But anyway, my intent was just, we hit a rough patch.
You know what, I, you know what, I honestly, we need to take a break right now.
Perfect.
It's 9:42, and I'm taking a break.
Sounds great.
See you. See you. All right, it is 9:52, we're back from recess. All right, so do we have to put a motion on the floor to?
I believe we just need consensus, is that correct, John?
We were just looking at the website, generally, I think consensus helps, we could provide a letter of support or something showing that approval is granted to support an application, you know, the better level, the higher level of approval we get on these, but again, we have a tight turnaround on this, do I think we could get an update from the city in the future? Yes, but we'd like direction now on what to do for round seven, but yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
We need to know what we do today if we're going to be able to make the deadline.
For round seven, yeah.
Okay. So are you saying consensus or a vote? Because you said the higher it is, the better it is. Do you want to vote?
In an ideal world, a vote would be great, but I don't.
Can authorize a letter of support?
Or a letter of support would.
I mean, vote, vote to go with these and to provide a letter of support.
All right, then I'll put a motion on the floor to support Route 117 infrastructure improvements for $250,000, as well as the City of Groton, C-Wall for $9.8 million going for grant, the applications.
Check this.
All right, moved by Franco, seconded by Gajewski.
She still has time. I'm sorry, Counselor Boarder still has time.
There's, we've also went to recess because of Counselor Boarder.
Right, my apologies.
Counselor Gajewski.
Yeah, no, I just really want to emphasize that, and I know Director Reiner did a great presentation, but as he said, as he stated, this application is a more stringent application process, so that basically you need to have buy-in to apply for a grant, so that, my understanding is that if we okay this and do a letter of support, it gives them buy-in and makes the application stronger, so, which is why they're here to, normally, when you apply for a grant, our town staff just applies for a grant, but this grant requires a more stringent application process, which is why, my understanding, Director Reiner is here. So I just wanted to state that for the record, and I yield back.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote.
Point of information?
On your question.
So I yield my time, and I yield my second time, too, is that the rule, I just want to make sure it's clear?
Yes, you lose your time on that subject.
But that's, can you just clarify that?
It's in the rules.
Can you, because I thought you only lose that time.
It is in your rules, you will have to look in your rules. So we're going to take a vote on the motion on the floor, made by Franco, seconded by Gajewski, for the Route 117 infrastructure improvements for $250,000, and the City of Groton, C-Wall for $9.8 million. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'll abstain because I didn't get the information until tonight.
All right, that passes, eight to zero to one, Boarder, I'm abstaining. All right, up next, 2025-416 Pleasant Valley Property Sale Review Committee Finalist Recommendations. This in our packet is on page 82.
And we do have a presentation for this one that the manager was going to bring up. So briefly, in open session, we're going to give an overview of the PSRC process for Pleasant Valley, and then talk about executive session and go into executive session. So really, we want to talk about the disposition process, just high-level kind of town council next steps, and then go into that executive session piece of things, and then also talk about the next step for the council after executive session. Next slide. And next slide. All right, thank you. All right, so very briefly, quick, in July 2023, you've heard this before, you did a new process. In September of '24, the council approved the RFP for Pleasant Valley, the former Pleasant Valley School. In January 21 of 2025, the RFP closed. Between February and April, we met with the PSRC and went through the responses that were received, identified a shortlist, and then arrived at a shortlist, preferred concepts, and we want to take that recommendation to the council, and that's what we're doing tonight. Again, you've seen this chart before, we bring it up just so that you know we're in that kind of third phase, picking that project developer, and there are certain things that go along with this phase, future phases, we'll be talking about negotiating for purchase and sales agreements, but today, we're in that kind of C-phase. Next slide. And again, we go into executive session for a number of reasons, you know, we've talked about this with our other excess properties, but really, so it protects proprietary information, sorry, maybe too much coffee today, keeps things fair, and also helps the town negotiate a better deal, and then when it's time for things to come out in public, we'll certainly share all that information. Next slide. And again, kind of our next steps tonight, we had shared with the council the finalist recommendation, the PSRC interview materials, and tonight, we'll go into executive session, some of the PSRC members will be with us in that, we'll talk about that preferred developer concept, and what your recommendation is going to do to either pick a firm or to interview that firm, and then how that works with the next steps of a public hearing, and the following steps from there. That's it for our open session of things.
Okay. Is there an executive session?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm waiting for it.
I hereby move that members of the town council go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1-200, Section, subsection D, for the discussion of the section of a site with the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political substitution of the state concerning potential purchase and development of the former Pleasant Valley School property, in addition to invite Director John Reiner, Chairman Integro Bert, Corinne Piazza, whose title I can't remember, and David Good, member of the committee, so moved.
Second, Pacino.
Made by Gajewski, seconded by Pacino. All right, then we will take a vote on going to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero, it is 10 o'clock, and we're going into executive session.
Okay, it's 11:03 and we're back from executive session. And we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to designate Spinnaker Acquisitions LLC as the preferred developer for the former Pleasant Valley Elementary School and to set a public hearing date for June 3, 2025. I so move.
Second, Pacino.
All right, that, um, motion by Parker, second by Pacino.
Madam Mayor, may I speak to this? Well, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There will be more information will be available at greatergrotten.com prior to the public hearing. Just wanted to get that out. I'm thankful to the committee members for bringing forth a nice project and we hope everyone will be happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the committee members. I think it was David Good, Emma Norman. I think it was David Goode, Emma Norman.
No, Emma Gibbs.
Emma Gibbs, sorry. Sorry. Um, Council Pacino and Council Gajewski and...
And Commissioner Boris.
And Commissioner Boris, as well as Mr. Burr and Mr. Reiner and Corinne were in there. And I thank you all because you did a good job here. Thank you so much. All righty then. Seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Parker? Second by Gajewski. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. We're adjourned at 11:05 PM. I say...